Good morning, everybody. At this time, I would like all of you, please, to rise as the Reverend Bishop Edmund Carmody will give our invocation. Please remain standing as it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and the Texas Flags.
Good and gracious Lord, we thank you for this beautiful area of the vineyard where we live. We thank you for the people of this area. We thank you for our county judge and our county commissioners who dedicate their time to making this your place, your kingdom. Lord, we come to you at Christmas time, and we rejoice that the people of this area welcome you into their community and into their homes. Lord, as we enter this courthouse, we look at the trees, the symbol of your presence in the world. And, Lord, we bring the trees into our homes and into our place of business to show, Lord, that you are with us, and you protect us, and you guide us. Lord, as we travel the streets of this city, we see the lights on all the homes, saying to you, Lord, you are welcome. There was no room in the inn on that first night, but there's room in our house for you, Lord, so that you can bring peace and justice and joy to all people. Bless all people who need help at this time of year. May we always be generous in reaching out to share what we have with others who need our help and need our care. Lord, bless our community, bless those who serve the community, bless those who protect the community, and bless the court who is there to show love for the neighbor, because greater love no person can have than a person gives their time to others. Lord, may we continue to give our time to others, help others, bring joy, peace, and harmony to all people, protect us during this wonderful season, and bless families so they will be united, sharing the joy of the Christmas season. Blessings, amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to have a safety briefing, and then we're going to take a couple of items out of order. And for the young men in the audience, if you'll be patient with us, we'll get to you right away. But I think you might find it interesting that we're out of order, because I think you'll get to see a little bit about what Commissioners Court is all about. But first, safety first, always. Timothy, give us a safety briefing, and then we'll advance with Judge McCoy's agenda item.
Judge, we need to do a quorum.
Oh, my goodness, you're absolutely right. 9:10 a.m., Madam Clerk, and I do certify that all commissioners are present, and therefore we do have a quorum. And for the record, it is December 18th, 2019, and we are at the third floor of the Nuaces County Courthouse, 901 North Leopard. Apologies. Go ahead.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, ma'am. Hey, we're meeting here today on the third floor of the Nuaces County Courthouse, located at 901 Leopard Street. Restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the Commissioners Court, past the Human Resources Office. Please note that there's a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom. There are five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area, immediately outside the courtroom. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom next to the Human Resources Office. Participants today responsible for dialing 911 will be Edward and Tyner. CPR-certified participants in the courtroom today are Margaret Mead and Dale County Auditor. In case of evacuation, our Egress route will be down the atrium stairs, immediately outside the courtroom, proceeding through the double doors located on the left-hand side of the courthouse, and muster across the street in the parking lot. In case there is a need to shelter in place, we'll remain in the building and wait further instructions from the Nuaces County Sheriff's Office. Our sheriff's safety topics for today are Christmas holiday fire safety. That concludes my safety brief, Judge.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, at this time, we have Judge Timothy McCoy here, as well as Judge Marty Huerta Quintanilla, and they have an item that is located on our agenda under E1. And Judge, if you would come out, come forward, please, and I'm also going to ask Julie Guerra to be available, HR Director, as a resource. The purpose of this agenda item, Commissioners, is to discuss and consider creating a temporary Drug Court Coordinator position at 29 hours for the County Court at Law Number 5. I have been able to receive the, if you will, the pre-information as to the necessity of this item, and I myself put this on the agenda. I believe it to be not only an emergency, but an absolutely incredible opportunity to bring families together, and there is no better time of the season to do that kind of work. So Judge, if you'll introduce the subject matter for us.
Yeah, I will. Thanks for having me, and thanks for considering this. And I've come before the Commissioners on prior, two prior occasions, for our Drug Court program, both of which were to get approval for grants now, to fund it. And now, unfortunately, we didn't get both, didn't get those grants, one of which was the Commissioners, y'all did commit to matching funds on it. And that grant, those grants were going to, a big portion, were going to fund this position, okay? Anybody can look at my court's numbers over the last few years and see that our caseload has tripled, at least tripled, and about 95% of the cases that I see on the CPS side involve drugs and alcohol, and are drug abuse, alcohol and mental health. And our Drug Court program, as a result of that, has also expanded. And our board and everybody that's involved in Drug Court has done a great job in moving forward. We've helped a lot of people. Our program's probably tripled from, you know, we used to have four or five individuals going through Drug Court, where we've been up to 16 to 20 now. And it's a great service, and what the coordinator does is help coordinate services with the individuals in Drug Court, helps screen them in Drug Court, helps make sure they get to court. And another good thing about our Drug Court program is we see them every two weeks. We functionally have 16 hearings every two weeks within a couple-hour span, which moves the cases along quicker, helps reunify the families quicker, helps get them off of the substances quicker, and it saves money when I can have 16 hearings in one setting, rather than have them spaced out over, you know, in a regular court setting and have to pay attorneys for each hearing. Now, the, what I'm requesting is, again, this funding, it was a full-time position, and I'm requesting to back off and do a part-time position, to allow our coordinator to stay in with us, keep working, keep working with our clients. And we are in the process of applying for grants. We're in the process of reviewing, we have reviewed the grants that were, applications that were submitted, and we want to make sure that we get those next time, so we're looking into what needs to be done and what, to get, you know, to get approved for them again. And if we do get funded by a grant, any, you know, let's say we get funded in two months, that's going to go to funding this position. But what we really need is some temporary help, so our program doesn't fall apart.
Discussion, I'd like to move that we accept.
And I'll take a second at this time, and then we'll have discussion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, and just to be clear, we did not expect the grant to not be performed upon, and that's why this presents an emergency situation, because it's very clear that work would stop, that you would not be able to continue in this work and these efficiencies in, really, almost the middle of our year because of the lack of funding. And so, therefore, Commissioners, I want to point out the funding source for this. Dale, if you would address that, and of course, we could readdress this issue at budget time, and when and if a grant is successfully procured, but I would not bring this forth outside of budget if I did not believe it to be in the best interest of Nuaces County's justice.
The way we're going to process of balancing the funding for this currently will come out of the General Funds, County Court Law 5. We'll be monitoring the budget at all times to make sure any adjustments needed. As the judge was saying, they're putting some applications in for some grants, and we're going to make sure if the grant is approved that it qualifies for reimbursing us for what we've expended. Hopefully, that'll happen, but we want to make sure this process continues and the need for this position is there. So right now, we expend the funding to come out of the General Fund temporarily to cover this, and if the grant is not awarded at some point in time, we'll bring this up for the next budget cycle.
And because it's 29 hours, Dale, just remind us, this is not, this is a compromise.
29 hour is a temporary, this does not require the county to issue or offer any medical benefits, and also, it's temporary, there's no retirement associated with this. So the only thing that we would have is normal federal withholding with our FICA Medicare and unemployment.
Thank you.
So what's the cost?
29, I don't know the hourly rate, I didn't get the hourly rate, so...
Julie?
Twenty-three thousand.
Come on to the video, I mean, to the video, to the microphone, please.
The cost for the 29 hours from January 1st through September 30th would be $23,432.
Thank you.
Then you had benefits to that. Did that include benefits?
That was just the salary.
So you had 20% of that, so another $4,000 to that, so...
About $27,000.
Twenty-seven, twenty, $20,000.
You know, Judge, I mean...
Yes, sir.
Me, this is really, kind of dear to my heart that, you know, JP's are the first line of defense with his kids, you know, and we want to keep him there as possible. When they go to Judge McCoy, unfortunately, they're already going to the second step of being in criminal, in the criminal justice system. And if we can keep him out of, from going anywhere else from there, he probably won't be going to prison or jails or whatever, which will pay like four times more. So this is, I mean, I don't care if it was $30,000, $35,000, I think the money is very, is worth every penny, when you can say one child, you know, one child is worth a lot more than $30,000. And, you know, if we need to fund this position here, I mean, I support it 100%.
Thank you.
But I think that, I think that we need to move on forward with this.
Thank you. Commissioner Modas.
Thanks, Judge. You know, having worked with CPS for 15 years prior to coming here to Commissioners Court, you know, I had the chance to see the inception of Drug Court, when it was just this one, you know, this idea of one caseworker coming in with like one or two cases, and thought it was novel, but didn't know how it was going to last. But Judge, like you said, I mean, both of you see, it makes a big difference, you know, you don't have to enter into the complexities of a normal case, and you're able to help meet the needs that a lot of times it just simply is some sort of drug issue that has caused separation between the child and the family. And the support that you all give them is a lot better than going through a punitive, I mean, there's still conditions to follow, but more of a punitive type of case that was kind of of the past. And so, I love this idea, I support, I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez, I think we need to fund it fully. I mean, I know our budget is tough, but in looking at that, I'm glad that we're, the recommendation is to, to cut, to scale back the hours maintaining, you know, our position that we have. I would hate that that would be an issue to lose qualified staff, though. And so, you know, it would be, you know, wholeheartedly to support a full-time position, and, you know, we have to scrape and look to find that, to make that happen, and I'm all in favor of that, because it is so important, and so, you all have my support for that.
Commissioner Vaughn.
I too agree that you need to do that. It's important to always know what the cost is, though, in anything we do, so, but I do support it.
And I think that I'm going to really rely on both of you judges to give us feedback on the 29 hours, whether it's working, whether it's not. I just appreciate, you know, you had a dilemma, we had a dilemma, and so we've been able to work together to find a solution that's good for all of us, but I concur with Commissioner Modas, we want to see the program successful, we don't want to cut it off so that it's not successful. So if we're doing something that's creating, you know, a clog in our pipeline, so to speak, I hope you'll please make certain that you keep us updated on that. Commissioner Chesney, you know so much about this particular court, I'm just giving everyone equal opportunity here. Do you...
I think they said it all, Judge, I mean, it's an incredibly important position. You know a little bit about it, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So Judge McCoy does it way better than I did, but it's definitely something that's needed, and glad to see Judge Huerta's still there. As many of you may know, I pointed her to that position when I was in, on the bench, and she's done an outstanding job in that court, and this is just an amazingly important position, so...
The only question I have for County Attorney is, do you need a motion that includes a reimbursement provision, or do we do that at the time a grant is procured? In other words, would you like to see this motion qualified to include a reimbursement provision? We're obviously hopeful that the grant will come through at the full time.
I would think at the time of the grant, depending, you know, to see if it's feasible or not.
Okay, okay. So in that case, I have a motion and a second, and I'll call the question. All those in favor of establishing this position at 29 hours signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're grateful, and this is your staff, correct?
This is our coordinator at the moment, and this is our Court President, who assists at the real court.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, your service. It's truly valued here at Commissioners Court, and as I said, I mean, I want you to always know that we obviously honor the budget process, but when you need help, that's why we are here. So please don't hesitate in keeping us informed, and again, thank you for the work that you're doing. And for all the gentlemen in the audience, look at Judge McCoy. Unless you see him on the street, you will not see him again. Do you understand what kind of court he's got? The one you don't want to be in, okay? So, say hello, and then don't...
And then say goodbye.
Say goodbye. That's it, all right? On a serious note, he's a great guy, and he has kids just like you and your age, and the truth is, is that judges are good people, and they're there to be helpful to our families, and it's a great lesson, what you just learned, is that judges aren't there to be vindictive or punitive. They're there to see that justice is done, and they're also there to advocate for people coming together and solving their problems. And that's what we just did. We just put dollars in his court to help families who are struggling with alcohol and substance abuse find a way through the legal process and getting back together and starting that healing. And I just want you to know, what you got to see today is what government's all about. Government is good, if it's done right, and so I'm glad that they were here. We have to get them back to work, that's why we put them first. I hope you'll forgive me for making you second, but he's really important. Thank you so much, Judges, staff. Okay, another person that's very important to the courthouse, will be going second, and we are advancing item number, I believe it's six, 4A6, and this is, so the County Clerk has a very important appointment, and she's required to attend, and so let's discuss and consider approval of item number A6. It is an interlocal contract with the Department of Information Resources, the acronym DIR, and it's relating to their master service agreement for the purposes of conducting an election security and assessment. And from where you are, if you'd use the mic and set the table for us, tell us about this item and what you need from us.
Well, I need your signatures and your approval.
Okay.
So it's required by law, it's a new law, House Bill 1421 that was passed, took effect on September 1st, and it's required that all counties that we have a security assessment, which is important, because we don't, not have a statewide, like, best practices for security. Thank you.
I've got a motion, a second. Any other questions for the County Clerk?
Now, there are two...
Yes, ma'am.
There's two actions that need to be done. One is for the master services, and then the second one is for the managed services, the terms and conditions.
So let's take the first motion as, who made the motion?
I did.
Would you make that for the master service agreement?
I do.
And the second as well? And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. And then we also need approval for the terms and conditions. And may I have a motion?
Some aid.
And a second? And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Okay, you've got your approval, and keep us posted. Let us know, since it's the first time we're doing it, it'll be interesting to hear what our assessment reveals. Now, we're going to go back into regular order, and I'd ask Commissioners that you take a look at the item E1. We have three minutes to approve, December 3rd, 2019, December 4th, and December 9th, and I would entertain a motion for those approvals of those minutes.
Some aid.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, now, the fun part. I have the honor of going into F, which is to adopt resolutions, proclamations, or orders, and with us today are Nuaces County citizens. That's what you guys are. You belong to the county of Nuaces, and they are the Aguadulce Longhorns, and they are area football finalists. And gentlemen, if you would stand, I have a gentleman here who's called our court administrator, and he's going to read something about you all, and so when he concludes, I might ask you to come up here, but this is about you, and we're here to celebrate your achievements. Tyner, take it away.
Yes, Judge. This is the 2019 Aguadulce Longhorns football team. Whereas the Aguadulce Longhorn football team represented this region in Class 2A football, whereas coached by head coach and athletic director, Robert Beard, and assistant coaches, Jesse Cadena, Danny Valdez, Jason Calvez, the Aguadulce Longhorns persevered over tremendous competition to end the season as area finalist. Whereas the Aguadulce Longhorns received overwhelming support from family, faculty, school administrators, students, team trainers, statisticians, and the entire community. Whereas the Aguadulce Longhorn players include seniors, Michael Berry, Raynor Cross, Cruz Garza, Dylan Garza, Emmanuel Ibarra, Aaron Medina, Wesley Sanchez, and juniors, Michael Burnson, Fabian Castilleja, Santos Castillo, Peter Castro, Lupe Garcia, Dominic Gonzalez, Roland Guerra, Jesse Perez, Joey Perez, Joseph Ramos, Angel Vera, and sophomores, Clayton Garcia, Eduardo Hernandez, Nathan Leha, Roland Lerma, Donald Mann, Eric Perez, Benjamin Sadler, Isaiah Salinas, Deon Vega, Carlos Vinton, and freshman, Michael Benavides, Ethan Calvez, Desmond Garcia, Nemo Jacobo, Isaiah Lopez, Miguel Lopez, Luke Martinez, Jaime Ramirez, RJ Ramirez, and athletic director, Robert Beard, assistant coaches, Jesse Cadena, Jason Calvez, Danny Valdez, and trainers, Jonathan Conway, Kristen Garcia, Kirsten Garza, Renee Sines, superintendent, Nora Lopez, principal, Dr. Chris Daniels, and true leading sponsors, Ariana Aravallo, Amy Luna, and filmer, Valerie Aguilar. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nuaces County Commissioners Court hereby congratulates and recognizes the Aguadulce Longhorn football team, and further requests the citizens of Nuaces County to join the court in recognizing the Aguadulce Longhorn football team for becoming a Class 2A 2019 area finalist.
And gentlemen, there's so many of you, but what I think we'll do is, we'll ask you to join us here if you would honor us, we'll take a photo. I think you all have a trophy that you probably want to sport. Before you do that, this is your county commissioner, right here, Mr. John Modas, and I bet he might want to say something to you, but I just want to wish you, on behalf of Nuaces County and Commissioners Court, our heartfelt congratulations. And honestly, I love, I love the game, and I love the game because it's a great game to watch, and it's a great game because of what it does for you. And there's a really famous guy that I always paid a lot of attention to, because he was really, had a lot of football wisdom, and his name was Vince Lombardi. And maybe you heard about Coach Lombardi. And Coach Lombardi said, "The measure of who we are is what we do with what we have." So it really doesn't matter, in the end, how tall you are or how big you are. It matters who you are inside. And I told a group of boxers this last night, the great thing about sports is that it doesn't just build character, it reveals it. And it revealed it this year for Aguadulce. And I think Commissioner Modas knows a little bit more about how special this year was, and he's going to talk about that. But we asked you to, Ms., are you in school or out of school today? See, that was a good thing, right? We asked you. So, we asked you here today, and I know it was a long drive, but we wanted to tell the whole world, and you're on TV right now, so we're telling everybody that watches us all across the state how important it is to us that your character was revealed on the field and off the field. And I'm kind of partial to the Longhorns myself, because I was a UT Longhorn, so I think you have a great mascot, and I'm very, very proud to be your county judge. Here's Commissioner Modas.
Thank you, Judge. Guys, you want to come up as I talk, you know, this is special recognition, because Aguadulce hadn't been to the playoffs, or this far in the playoffs, in what, 25 years, right? Mrs. Superintendent Lopez. So this is a special time to recognize them. We may not always recognize them if they continue to make area playoffs, we hope that they will every year. And then we hear basketball's doing great, and baseball looks like it's going to be a great season, too, so thank you all for coming, congratulations, guys.
Don't move.
So we get some guys come up in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, those that are up in the front, stay here, and then we'll get some more in the back. Yeah.
For the record, we also have superintendent of schools, Ms. Nora Lopez. So Nora, thank you so much for being here and representing education at its best, and I really do mean it. It's on and off the field, guys, that you guys are winners. I'm going to join right here.
My name is Coach Jason Calvez, I'm the defensive coordinator. We have our offensive coordinator, Jesse Cadena, and Coach Valdez. Coach Beard couldn't, is AD head football coach, he couldn't be here today, he had some medical issues he had to take care of and put it off till now, so that's where he's at. Just a few things about these guys, this was a fun season. I'm from Aldosi, and it's been 25 years, we've made the playoffs the last few years, but it's been 25 years since we won a playoff game. So that was something real special for them, to beat DeHannes in the by-district round. In the area round, we went on to play Broman. Broman was a tough, tough time, just a few years ago, they had won like three or four state championships in a row, so we were going against a pretty powerful team. But these guys fought, fought hard all night long, lost 56 to 24, but went up in Yocum, went up to Yocum, Texas, and represented us real well, so we're real proud of them. Just a few accolades, we had several kids make all district, first team, second team, honorable mention, but we did have one most valuable player of our district, our whole district, and I don't know where he is, where is he? Cruz Garza, our running back slash outside linebacker, was MVP of our entire district.
But once again, we want to thank the judge and the commissioners, this was a great honor.
This, I know as far as I remember, this has never happened for Aguadulce to be recognized like this, so this is real special, and we thank the entire Nuaces County community.
Tell Mayor Howard to say hello.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, and it's wonderful to see so many young people here entertaining the community with the skills that you have. So on Friday night, when you take the field, you entertain the community, community's proud of you, and... you entertain the community. Community is proud of you, and you show the great character that you have. So we hope and pray that you will continue to be great leaders. You will serve your community now. You are our community representatives, and you will be the leaders in the future. So we ask the Lord to bless you, to guide you, to strengthen you, and we pray that you'll always become the best version of yourself that you can be. You ask yourself every day, can I be better? Can I do better? Can I reveal a greater character? And if so, ask the Lord to help you to reveal the great person you are. And above all, remember the talents that God gave you. You have to get the best possible grades at school that you can get. They don't all have to be As or Bs, but they have to be the very best that you're capable of getting after two or three hours' study every night. So it's very, very important. You're gifted. You've got talents. Reveal the character you have. Make a difference. And may the Lord bless you, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. And may you have a wonderful, wonderful Christmas season, and may you radiate kindness and love to all people. God bless you, and thank you Judge.
Thank you Bishop. And Coach, MVP, this is the official resolution that was read, and it's been signed by all of us. So once again, safe journey back home to Aguadulce, and we'll see you very soon, right? When the lights come back on Friday night. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Marine Corps, man. Go to Marine Corps. Thank you, man. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all you do.
Commissioners, I was reminded that we need to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay.
You know Judge, I was, hey Tyner? I was looking up on Tyner, and he said he played football, and it said that he played in, guard, and tackle. He said the end of the bench, guard the water, and tackle anybody trying to get it.
Commissioner, that's a great one. Okay, forgive me, but we do have somebody else we'd like to make certain that they get back to their duties, and they've been waiting patiently. Commissioners, may I turn your attention to 4A1 and discuss and consider approval of agreement for the transfer of law enforcement dog to Deputy Ryan Walling. And first of all, let's have a motion and a second. And Deputy, would you like to say a few words and introduce us to your assistant deputy there on four legs?
Why, thank you for your time. And yes, this is a K-9 Bach. You can't see him right now, but I'll put him up in the front here in a minute. K-9 Bach has been a deputy sheriff for approximately six years, and he's been, I'm his fourth handler. So he's had quite a few transitions. He's assisted the deputy sheriffs with multiple things, including tracking of criminals with the Lonesome Dove shooting a few years back, assisted a lot of agencies with traffic stops and narcotics, including the DEA, the DA Task Force, Border Patrol, and State Troopers. And he's actually become a pretty good, important part in mine and my wife's life now.
Well, we thank him for his service, and we thank you for being a loving handler because obviously, these very special canines doing extraordinary work in law enforcement also have to be handled by very incredible people. And I'm glad that you gave us a little bit of history. So there's three other people that I wish to thank, even though I don't know their names. But the transfer of this dog is actually possible because Commissioner Modis really made this a highlight of the legislature and the legislative session, and because of a statewide proposition that passed by, I think, record proportions, we're able to do this ceremony today. I don't know if we're the first commissioner in the state, but certainly every time we're going to do it, we're going to feel like it's the first, and it's special. Would you like to make some comments?
Thank you Judge. You know, when I first became aware of this issue two years ago, I think, when we had our first transfer, we had to go through a lot. And so thankfully, you know, we advocated when we were there multiple times earlier this year in Austin, and the judge and the rest of us, and just to really advocate for a more streamlined service to guarantee that as your partner retires, that they're able to go directly with their handler, no other red tape, just directly, no room for error, that it could have happened the way it was before. So I'm proud that the law changed and that it became part of the Texas Constitution now, where it's a part of it that will never be removed. So I'm just proud that we're able to do this. And this, I know, is one of the first since the adoption and the vote from last month. So excited that this can happen for you, and we're proud of the service that Bach has done for our county, and that he can spend the rest of his years in comfort with you and your wife. So, thank you.
Just a quick question. How does it get determined when a dog has to be retired? I just didn't know how that worked.
With him specifically, it was over medical issues. He has hip dysplasia, so his right hind leg is at 25% mobility, and it actually affects my job too, because I got to that point where I had to start lifting him up inside the patrol vehicle when he could just jump before.
I see. Well, thank you for taking this on. This is awesome of you to do, and you and your wife as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So moved.
And I've got a, we already have a motion and a second. I'm not sure, have we done our vote? So let's vote on this, kind of our first one, very momentous. All those in favor of the transfer to Deputy Walling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Congratulations.
Can we get a picture with him and the dog?
I think that'd be fantastic. Is he comfortable with that?
Yes, he's comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
You already ate?
Well, it's just that I know that sometimes they don't want you to touch them. I know. the county auditor and his staff for excellence in financial reporting as presented by the Governor Finance Officers Association. This is given for comprehensive annual financial reporting for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018. And Tyner, do we have something special for the auditors, or is it?
I believe they brought something, but I do have the news release. It's right there.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, would you pass it to Tyner Dale? And we want to recognize Dale and actually auditor, county auditor, and his staff for receiving this very prominent award. I'd like to see it so I could, it's nice since they've got the video here. It's issued from this Governor Finance Office Association. This is the type of award you want to get as a county, because there's nothing more important than a county's budget and its fiscal health. So the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting is presented to Nuaces County, Texas, and it's for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year September 30th, 2018. It is signed by Christopher Morrell, who's the executive director and CEO. And I don't know where you intend to put this, but I think it should be displayed prominently.
They provide us with another plaque that's in my office. It's a nice piece of granite. It's got different stickers on it.
Very nice.
They've displayed there. They provide that for this particular situation. As you said, this is a very prestigious award for many counties. The GFOA has high standards that they make all of our, all entities put together. My staff and I work with others to make sure we meet those standards and exceed them as best we can. We've received this award for the last 26 years straight.
Wow.
And we continue to expect to receive this in the future. As you said, we've now also put our budget through the same process, and our budgets have been awarded the last four years. So we're, and now we're going to also try to put another type of reporting requirement that they have for consideration. But these are some high standards that we want to make sure we maintain. As you said, this makes sure that our report is meeting the standards and is to the true aspect of what the county is and where our financial position is and how we report it.
Thank you so much, and thanks to your whole staff. I also want to express my appreciation for allowing me to come and celebrate the holiday meal with you and your staff. And even though we get to see Lisa, we get to see a few folks, you know, kind of over and over, it was really a pleasure to be able to sit and see, you know, and visit with people behind the scenes that you don't get to see often, but we know are just doing yeoman's work to keep all of the numbers correct, and also to make sure that we're data sharing with the public. I know you've done a lot of new reporting on our website, and it's now available to the public as well, in case anyone's interested in really studying our budget in depth.
Yes. And a while back, the state did have a transparency platform that was there. They've kind of changed their, how they're working on it. We're working on trying to get that scenario back up so we start getting awards from the state again.
Well, thank you so much. This is, doesn't require any action. It's just a recognition, Commissioners, and it's really fantastic. And again, once again, our heartfelt congratulations. Thank you, Tyner. I'll let you take this. I'd love to see this outside, you know, maybe where people can view it.
My staff does a terrific job on putting this stuff together. I drive them crazy sometimes and working this, but they work their tail off in getting the information we need to make sure we report the correct information for the county and keep the county in the position it's in.
Well, there's no doubt it was a major effect, cause and effect in our moody's coming from, in receiving our stable outlook, which resulted in better interest rates. And so everything you do has a consequence, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you again. Commissioners, I'm going to move to board appointments. You'll notice that we have seven today. And Tyner, if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to allow you to lead through us through the first seven, but the first is BMAC, Beach Management Advisory Committee.
And Judge, we didn't get any applicants on that one. We'll open it up again.
We're still working on it, Judge.
Okay, sounds good.
Move to table.
I'll take a second. And all those in favor of tabling to the next court meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm guessing it's January 8.
Yes.
Okay, let's table to January 8. The second one, Tyner, is the Regional Health Awareness Board. This one actually has some interest because I think I need to disclose to the Commissioners that the city will no longer be participating. The city of Corpus Christi, I should say.
And do we need to, is this one that?
Tyner.
I'm missing that one in my book, Judge. Hang on just a second.
I was going to suggest that we table until we have a discussion as to where the future is here.
What is the board?
Tyner, do you want to reveal information about what I just said about the city? I got that information straight from our health department, that they would not be funding this year the Regional Health Awareness Board, and they would not be participating. I'm just passing on that information.
Judge, I think it might be appropriate at this point to table the item, because I think.
Motion to table, sorry.
Okay, a motion to table and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. We'll bring that back on January 8, and maybe Annette could come and present as well. The next several are in relation to our ESDs. The first is Emergency Service District Number One, Tyner.
And Judge, you have letters of interest from Richard Rose and Danny Tate.
Correct.
Trying to catch up. Is that our?
I'm sorry, that's number three, H3.
How many vacancies are there?
Two. All the ESDs get filled up today, according to market.
And just in case I'm missing it.
Yes.
Is there anybody, Danny or Richard, here present? Okay. I've got a motion from Commissioner Vaughn.
Second.
A motion and second. All those in, yes, yes, sir.
It's just for this and for all the other appointments. If we could just be a little bit more specific next time, so we know how many vacancies or what.
I think that's a good idea.
The names normally have a full description, and so maybe just.
Good idea.
Too much to enter in, but we need something to.
Tyner, maybe just as part of our new protocol, if you could just let us know if this is filling a vacancy and for what term, and, you know, sometimes it's an unexpired term, and just to kind of get a little bit more.
Yeah, we'll give more, we'll give more information.
More details. I've got, yes, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Number four, yes, sir.
On the next one, I was just going to nominate the, or move appointment of the two for ESD two.
And I have a motion and just requiring a second. All those in favor of Miguel Rodriguez, and I believe it's pronounced Donna Egenberger, are either Miguel or Donna present with us today? Okay. Got a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign.
District three, I'd just, I'd like to nominate both them, young men and story.
Second.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner.
On number five.
And a story for District three.
Yes, for District three. I've got a motion on Commissioner Chesney's, and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay. I was an aye on that too. I'm sorry. I somehow lost a piece of paper. Commissioner, may I borrow?
Okay, and on ESD number four, you've got a resignation from Kathy Mayo, and you have applicants of three individuals, Donald Herman, Jeffrey Atwood, and Damian Forneras. And with appointment of those three, that would fill up that board as well.
So motion to reappoint Atwood and Herman and appoint Forneras.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. And then the next one would be for ESD number six. ESD number six.
ESD number six, you have Gavanda Kadena and Donnie McNair. Those are incumbents, and that will fill up the board as well.
Motion to reappoint.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Everybody, aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, the motion carries there. For all of those board appointments, we wish them congratulations on their board appointments, and also thank them for their public service. And we will be sending them letters from the administrators' court advising them of their appointments. At this time, Edward, I've got indications that I have no public comment signees, but I will offer it one more time if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to bring public comment. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items A through S, I believe. A through S. Commissioners, if you'll take just a moment to look over them, and let me know if there are any that need further discussion that need to be removed.
Item R, I'm sorry, not R, F.
F, F as in Frank?
F as in Frank.
F as in Frank. Let me get that. Commissioner Vaughn, anything? Chesney, Gonzalez, I'm going to remove H just because we have some wonderful people here in the audience I'd like to recognize. Okay, let's take a motion for the approval of A through E excluding F and H, and then G, I, all the way through S. I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Commissioner, do you want to take F for us with Tyner on those dates?
Yes Judge, just to clarify, I mean, I know that we had some discussion last time, and there was some changes that we had, and just, I wanted just to clarify. I know we had some add and deleted. But Tyner, you feel that this is? But Tyner, you you feel that this is.
If you look at your screen, it shows what we deleted and what we added in the red and the blue on your screen. And we think that that accommodated people that were going to be out on certain occasions. And so I think, you know, I think that this will fit with everybody's schedule next year to date. And as you know, things come up and we we can adapt if we need to. But we feel this is a good starting point.
You good?
Yeah, just wanted a little bit of discussion on it.
Sure.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, I just wanted to acknowledge you often see these items on consent agendas. Those are the approvals of outside agency contracts. In this case, it's for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. And I just want to read them out, the Children's Advocacy Center of the Coastal Bend, Corpus Christi Black Chamber of Commerce, Delmar College Foundation, the ARC Assessment Center and Emergency Shelter for Youth, the Purple Door, and Westside Helping Hand. And people might wonder, well, why do you do that? You know, why is that important role for the county to give to nonprofits who are already tasked as their mission, you know, to help? And that's because I see it as a true partnership. It's a acknowledgement of the work that these 501(c)(3) organizations are doing in our community. And it's an acknowledgement that we like what they're doing, we support what they're doing, and that we are trying to say that we believe that that's part of our mission. So whether it is domestic violence and combating domestic violence at the Purple Door or whether it's the ARC Assessment Center and Emergency Shelter for Youth, which takes care of the most vulnerable babies and children in our community with Sister Milagros at the helm, or the Black Chamber of Commerce promoting small and large businesses alike in our community, CASA, or in this case, Delmar College Foundation is another recipient, making sure that our community has the type of access to affordable higher education, vocational education. And in Westside Helping Hands instance, the opportunity to give young children not only mentors and a place to study after school, but for them to absolutely have a safe environment where they can flourish. I know I had that as a child and I can tell you, I think it was all the difference in the world to be surrounded by opportunity and loving people around me. And so I just want to acknowledge, I want to acknowledge everybody who's in the audience who came today to see these outside agency contracts. I want to acknowledge Teresa because you work very diligently on making sure that all the paperwork is done for these outside agencies. And I want to thank my fellow commissioners and this is the season of giving. And I want to thank you for giving so selectively and so thoughtfully to the different agencies. If you're an agency receiving one of these contracts, would you be so kind as to stand and introduce yourself? Go ahead. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Paul Bane, Westside Helping Hands. There was reference earlier to the value of saving a child. Early intervention was one of the principles used by Father James when he started Westside Helping Hands in 2015. We're happy to say that with your support, the organization will continue to improve and thrive.
Thank you, thank you so much. I know it's hard for other outside agencies to be here. We do these on regularly on commissioners' courts. And I just want to start saying thank you for being a partner to Noises County.
Judge, I just want to say a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes we take it for granted that this nonprofit is just out there to do things. But you know, we we didn't help the nonprofits and they didn't exist. Just think of the problems the county would have. Think of the issues, the jails, how full they would be, the juveniles, you know, where would they wind up? Judge McCoy's Court, you know, so they're actually doing the work for us. We're not, we're just giving them a little helping hand, like helping hand, you know, and to do to do the work for us because there's no way that the county would be able to do it.
You're right.
There's no way, you know, and not even the city would be able to do it. So this nonprofit, I'll tell you what, they reach across from one end to the other of Noises County. And because of them, you know, we were able to save a lot of children and a lot of parents, you know, and and keep our jails, you know, hopefully where they at now, maybe lower. But, you know, I just want to say thank you to all those nonprofits that they're out there maybe seven days a week, you know, and 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 beyond that. Thank you for what they do, thank you for continuing doing it and and God bless them.
Yes, I echo that. So may I have a motion then? I just wanted to highlight their work and why we do it.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks again, Paul, for being present. At this time, I'm going to move on to the regular agenda items. And you'll see that we've already done number one, so we can move straight to number two. And that's to receive an update from the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute on the preliminary reports from the Comprehensive Mental Health Needs Assessment for Noises County. And welcome, welcome, John.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners. As Judge Canales said, and I met some of you at the initial event, middle of October, on this work with the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute. We are a, I would like to just give you a quick overview of our work to date, which will continue through spring. I spoke yesterday to the Hospital District Board and talked about some of our findings. Some of what I'll talk about today will be somewhat technical. Some of the slides are data rich, to say the least, but I'll try to summarize sort of what our initial impressions are to date. And I do appreciate the opportunity to be here. The Meadows Institute is a not-for-profit, nonpartisan institute. We were established five years ago. Ninety-eight percent of our funding is philanthropic. The Meadows Foundation established us to try to raise public awareness of the need for organized mental health policy. Many of you on this commission have worked with that. Commissioner Marrez, when you worked with Family Protective Services. Commissioner Gonzalez, your work with probation. Commissioner Chesney, your work in establishing the diversion program. So all of you are familiar with these issues. And one of the things I think that is central to these issues is that we still treat mental illness and historically we have as kind of a segregated illness. We treat mental illness unlike any other illness, which is why the justice system is burdened with it. I heard yesterday, the hospital district, the proportion of its budget that goes to correctional mental health, issues involving the jail having to contract for mental health services. I was on a call earlier this morning with another county where fifty percent of their medication costs in jail are for antipsychotic medication. And so one of the things that informs our work is that, and if we do have a bias, it's that the best mental health care should be provided within the general healthcare system. And again, many of you have have during your career seen the impact if we don't do that. The second thing that informs our work is that we should intervene as quickly as possible and as early as possible. And certainly, there's been some significant amount of effort in this county with the CIT Training Program for Officers, Mobile Crisis, and other sort of things. But one of the things that becomes clear, and I'll highlight just a couple of things. And again, what I'm giving you are initial data and impressions. And as I told Judge Canales yesterday and the Hospital District Board yesterday, we want to make sure the data we report are correct. And so this is an iterative process. We will be meeting with key stakeholders repeatedly over the next few months to make sure that as people who we're a group, we don't live here. And so we are mindful of the fact that we want anyone we've talked to and any opinion we form to for folks here to have an opportunity to push back, both at the data and our impressions. But our primary deliverable is to develop a comprehensive needs assessment with a special emphasis, not just on the mental health system generally, but on veterans' issues. There's, as I recall, ten thousand veterans here. And when you count their families, around thirty thousand veterans and families, which has an enormous significance in terms of what happens in the school district with trying to deal with emotional disorders and other sort of things. We're going to look at the foster care system. We will look and have begun to look already as per the contract at the justice system. And so we're going to look at generally at mental health, but also dive down deeply into the various populations that are most affected by this. This timeline, your contract with us is what we take as kind of our marching orders. And and so I want to assure you, we are on pace to meet the contract deliverables. We take those very seriously. And we will, as I said, both to the Hospital District Board yesterday and will assure you folks that we will not issue any report without ample opportunity for you folks to take a look at it first and to push back at it. So this will not be kind of at the end of the process, we mail your report and say, thank you very much and and good luck with this. So that's kind of the the basic overview of our work and we do appreciate the opportunity. I've, one of the hard things about being at this point in the agenda is having to follow the football team that did very well. I was on a basketball team that never did that well. A service dog that I was reminded of my own hip issues as a service dog and sort of the impact of hip issues on retirement and just the wonderful things in this community. So it's a great pleasure to work here and it's a great pleasure to be here. We've interviewed so far, by this point, about forty people. I anticipate in the end we'll interview somewhere around a hundred fifty or a hundred sixty people. I can assure you all as commissioners that the folks with the county or funded by the county we've talked to have been very forthcoming, they've been very open. And we appreciate that very much because it's a burden to have to stop and talk to folks during the day. So thank you all for that. Let me just, a couple of things. These are, a couple of these, as I said, are going to be very heavy going. I will only make one point about this particular one, which is that, as you know, and it's not so not a surprise to you, if you have around sixty thousand children and youth in this county, and we've included some of the other counties in this because the contract asks for eventually a regional approach, so that's kind of part of our thinking. But half of those kids and youth live in poverty. And poverty, as you know, is a big issue and implicated in health issues. And it's not that kids who grow up poor are more prone to illness than anybody else. It's simply what Judge you said earlier, if you have advantage, if you grow up in a household with health insurance, with access to primary care and other sort of things, you've got a better shot at good health than folks who don't, leaving aside catastrophic illness and other sort of things. Poverty is a social determinant of health and it's a social, it's a determinant about access to healthcare. And so one of the things where we will wrestle with is, and one of the things we will show you as this goes on over the next few months, is something you already know, but often where kids in poverty live and where services are located are not matched very well. And when you factor in transportation issues and other sort of things, it exacerbates issues of access to care. And so one of the reasons that we include poverty indicators in our prevalence work is because it is an important variable when it comes to to health. With adults, again, it's less percentage-wise of poverty, but also obviously a big issue here. So we will, we start our work, which is sort of what census track data illustrate. When we get to prevalence, the next slide, I'll only point out a couple of things. If you look down under all mental health needs, these are for children. And I apologize for not highlighting these. If you look at the category at risk for out of home, out of school placement, these are our estimates. And we will have at the end of the report fifteen or twenty pages of sort of methodology, which for if any of you turn out to be statistical geeks, that will be of interest to you. Most people just wish it wasn't there and they're happy it's at the end. But we estimate about three hundred kids in this county are at risk at any one time that have such serious emotional disorders that they risk being taken out of school, out of home, whatever. And three hundred kids is a lot of kids. And again, we can go into chapter and verse about how we reach those numbers. It might be two hundred fifty, it might be three hundred eighty, it's not zero, it's not a thousand. But obviously, that has an enormous impact far beyond simply the numbers in terms of family life, sort of just disruption of those children's lives, impact on the school and what have you. We also, if you look, you know, a lot of kids with, we tend to focus on people with serious emotional disorder. If you look all the way down at the bottom line, the number of deaths by suicide, and these are according to official reports on that, fewer than ten. However, obviously, any one of those deaths is a major event. When I come to some of the emergency room admissions, there are many, many more, several hundred people admitted to your emergency departments each year who are in in terms of the hospitals' report of the reason were suicidal. And so we can sometimes be misled, in a sense, by the relatively small number of people who actually do kill themselves in recognizing the tragedy inherent in each of those deaths. But the number of people admitted as potentially suicidal or with some suicidal ideation is much higher. And that's a big issue in terms of then, how do we organize care beyond emergency rooms, which I'll talk about.
Excuse me, John, I'm glad you brought that up. And I didn't mention this yesterday, but I noticed that we're on 2017 data. And so what I wanted to point out was just something to follow up on is that sadly, in 2018, there was an inordinate amount of attempted suicides in one high school. And so I just wanted to point that out as in your aware.
And as we will, as we go on, we will update these data when data become available. And we've also made a series of projections using the data generated by the official Texas Demographer in terms of population growth and likely. So these are snapshots in time, as you point out, Judge. The, we do have in this country an enormous increase in suicide attempts by children and adolescents. Relative, for a long time, that was stable, relatively speaking, if you look at national data. But in fact, it is over the last few years beginning to increase for, and there's lots of speculation as to why that is. But clearly, Judge, I appreciate your comment, we'll make sure that we reflect that. The 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 other, if you look at the adult table just quickly, the second line from the bottom, first episode psychosis, one of the things the legislature did and and your senator spoke about this at the event a couple of months ago, was the legislature has, state legislature has invested enormously in mental health over its last three sessions. And in the last session, they invested about a hundred million dollars to create, among other things, research consortium for looking at children's mental health issues. And one of the things they did in that that's relevant here is they have created investments which should make it attractive for a university to partner with pediatric practices to try to pick up kids early. The we, the first episode psychosis, we estimate that around thirty kids roughly will, or for thirty adults, will develop psychotic disorder in a given year for the first time. There's a gap typically of five to seven years between the time somebody first shows symptoms of psychotic disorder and when they first get treatment. So it'd be as if we waited with cancer treatment till stage four, till we identified it and treated it. So one of the things, again, there's a relatively small number of folks who can generate enormous sort of personal and family tragedy, but also create enormous costs again across multiple systems. And so Commissioner, when you saw folks on probation, right, some of those folks had a psychotic disorder, but they had gone years without treatment. If you're dealing with family protective, you see signs of illness, but lots of times that may or may not have been identified by the health system and treated. So one of the things we will emphasize as we go through this assessment is are there opportunities to intervene more quickly and more intensely with relatively small groups of folks who, if you don't intervene quickly and intensely, will become enormous sort of cost if you strip it away just to fiscal terms, let alone human terms, on the hospital district's budget, on your overall budget and what have you. So that's why we emphasize some of the small numbers that drive big costs. And and again, it becomes relevant when we get to some of the criminal justice and some of the emergency room stuff. So let me pause there out of respect and ask if, I I want to make sure I don't just go through this so quickly that you feel like you didn't have a chance to talk.
I think groups, groups is good, you know, and you got to have, you got to have groups at one point. But, you know, you're right, this is really, when it's stage three or four or whatever, that's, it's almost an individual thing. Because, you know, they're not going to open up to anybody else, so.
Right.
So I think that you, I agree with you. I think this is, this is good that we're looking at that because, you know, and by the time they get to you, to to us, and and not because they didn't, maybe they didn't want the treatment or maybe nobody identified the treatment, the need or may, there's could be a lot of, a lot of multiple things that why he hasn't got the treatment.
Right.
You know, so, and I think this comes out in. so. And I think this comes out in, as an individual, uh, counseling session that, that we find out, right?
Yes, Commissioner, and it's, yeah.
And John, the only thing I'm curious and I'm sure we'll get to this, but I always like to know where we, where we sit. I'm, I wasn't surprised because I've lived here my whole life, so I'm, have a heightened awareness. But what I can't figure out is whether or not half the population or our surrounding counties, which are looking at more than half of its population of children living in poverty, where does that sit geographically? I mean, how do we look in comparison to like Bear County or, you know, how do we look in relation to other urban counties or other areas in the state? You know, where, where are we there? Because that's also going to play a big determination in our opportunities for grants. Is that just prevalent around Texas that every jurisdiction has about half their kids living in poverty? Or is it, are we just really skewed? I guess I'm looking for some interesting data.
Obviously it's distributed sort of differently, but I think in terms of the work we've done, um, you have a higher percentage of kids relative to the overall number of kids living in poverty.
Okay.
And, and again, one of the things, as I said, we will look at more intensely and we have found in some other places where there's high degree of poverty is that we have a service system that generally speaking depends on people getting to the services. And we have lots of families who can't get to the services either for transportation reasons or what have you. And then there's also issues of cultural competency, to use a phrase a lot of folks use, right? But you've got, you know, sort of, does the service mix match both in terms of its geographic proximity, but also in terms of how it's organized to, um, to deal with service needs? So that's something we want to do a lot of interviews about and talking with.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I'll, I'll say is, is that we, and you have here, and I'll come to this toward the end, um, you've created kind of a, a, really, you know, the sheriff and the police department have been terrific at, um, trying, creating innovation around trying to do better outreach to folks to be, um, more aware of and cognizant of mental health issues. But, and your local mental health authority has mobile outreach. But generally speaking, we still mostly rely in mental health for police to do the initial intervention, which is not what we do with any other illness. And so that has all kinds of implications for your jail, for sort of your budget there, for access to general healthcare, et cetera.
I just want to say one more thing, Judge.
Of course.
Me and looking, looking here at these numbers here, I would say it's really low, the twenty-five thousand and the five thousand. It's like the school, you know, the school districts, you know, they don't, they always say, what's your problem on truancy? What's your problem in dropout? Well, they say fifteen percent, really it's thirty-five percent.
Right.
So, you know, to me, looking at these numbers here, I would say it's almost three times that amount.
Okay.
So, but I don't know who we're talking to, or what we, or where we, where we're getting information, the resources, but, you know, the problem is big, you know, and when I see truancies that are, it's an epidemic. And I'll tell you what, eighty percent of truancies, they got problems.
Yes. And I, so I think, as I said, the estimates of need and prevalence come from a variety of national databases and, and they are sort of, in a sense, what they are. But as you said, Commissioner, there are, when you do talk to school districts and other folks, they report higher degrees and they're, they're belie-, my dad taught elementary school for thirty-five years and even over the course of his teaching, he started sort of talking at home about more kids with emotional problems and things. I was in a small town in Indiana.
I don't blame the teachers, I blame the administration.
I, my, my father, my father is a school teacher, blamed the administration too.
They go above y'all, but I think the administration don't want to get it.
But I do think we are cognizant of your point. And I told Judge Canales yesterday, we've identified a number of school districts to really kind of immerse ourselves in in terms of, and there's also, it's a sensitive issue, right? Because there are, in the light of the school shootings, in the light of, of, of just general sort of belief, there are, sometimes parents have mixed views about how much schools should emphasize mental health issues. Um, but if you leave that aside, your point, there is clearly evidence that suggests once kids start having incidents and things in school, that they are more likely to end up in the juvenile justice system and then end up twenty years later in your probation department. Okay? Yes, Commissioner?
I want to, I guess this is a good, good time to share, you know, the other day, about a week ago, I was given, uh, I was sent a text message from, um, a police officer through the school district. And this was unsolicited. I, I really don't think he's aware of the work that's been done and what we've commissioned you to do. But he kind of suggested that, you know, we partner with, uh, CCISD in this case, because that's what he, he knows. And hi- his frustration or his issue that he sees being one of the first responders when mental health issues come up is, you know, that there's a lack of the facility. And I know we've talked about that already before, but i- in his is where they have children who have mental issues and also the troubled students and that they're just kind of passed along. They're put in these cells that they call where it's just a group, a class setting, but you have a caretaker educator who's there just to let them just kind of really not even harm themselves. Or when they do try, because he mentioned there was a kid who tried to hang himself with his own belt in the classroom, that, you know, that's when they would come in and respond. But there, there's, there's a lot that's, that's lacking there. And, you know, his thing was, you know, perhaps have, you know, onsite counselors and, and educators and probation officers who can help them and not just pass them along every year, right? Just move them along, that social promotion that we used to always hear about and it's kind of gone in the back burner. Um, you know, they deal with the, with the in-school site that they have with, within CCISD for the kids who, who misbehave. But, you know, this is, is going, this goes along with what you're, what you're saying is the lack of facilities. But I don't know what kind of stakeholders you had. I know on the slide it said thirty. I know you said up to maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty that you may. I want to, I hope that when we see the final product, that it's, uh, people who are hands-on. I don't want to hear a bunch of administrators, not that they don't know what's needed, but that story may be two or three times removed by the time it gets to them. But the actual people who are there hands-on. And I'm sure you're already doing that and I know you, you've done this work before. But I really hope that we have people like that, that can give you tangible stories and, and suggestions.
I appreciate that, Commissioner, very much. And we, I assure you, we will. We focused our work the last six weeks or so, or eight weeks since we began on the prevalence data and the criminal justice to begin there because that was sort of the contract laid that out. But we met last week, our team, and talked about, um, the schoolwork specifically and what we've done, and I'll use Lubbock simply as an example, because we just finished up work there. We did a couple of focus groups with students in the school with permissions and, you know, sort of, it was not around the parents' back or anything else. And we talked to folks, you know, there is the gap you described that you sometimes find between sort of the official story of how things are going and the folks who actually have to do the work. And so we will do, um, and we've not done it yet, but we will hope to schedule with the cooperate, with the permission of the police chief, uh, focus groups with the three shifts of officers. Because one of the things we learn routinely about how it really works to try to get somebody with an emergency in mental health into care is from the police, because the police are the folks doing most of the transportation. And so we will do exactly what you, uh, suggest and, and, you know, we are happy to interview as many folks as we possibly can, um, for the very reasons you describe. Yes. I used to be an administrator.
You would welcome, you would welcome to your email, maybe even names, John?
Welcome.
I feel like we should all, just, if it's okay. I don't think you're going to get a flooding, but I think we know how to really select. I think you should go ahead and just email him the name and, as long as he's okay with, you know.
I would appreciate that very much because there's all, I used to be an administrator in a big agency and I could tell a good story, um, about how we were doing. But, um, the story on the ground is often very different, which I appreciate. And so any folks you think we should talk with, whether they are in some official capacity or not is, is good with us. So we would welcome that. We intend to do a, a big immersion down here, um, in January where we interview lots and lots of different people. We will be interviewing people probably through February. And we've got capacity to do this and we take this very seriously. So we're happy to interview as many people as we possibly can.
And just to remind our audience, this is just one of our benchmarks. We're, this is just a kind of step one preliminary.
Yeah, we've been at this about eight weeks.
Right. So I just want to kind of keep everybody, there's more great data, more great information to come. Thank you. Go ahead and, I know you've got a few more summaries that you want to get out.
Yeah. So thank you. I appreciate your time. So, uh, we do estimate, and again, we'll talk to, um, folks, um, in more detail about this. Um, but as I said earlier, if you look at children, we estimate about three thousand kids need specialty behavioral health care. And again, the number might be, you know, a thousand or whatever. But that's, that means care from the specialty behavioral health system, that their needs are such, as I said, about three hundred kids are, in our judgment, are at risk for being, um, taken from school or what have you. Commissioner, with your proviso, the numbers may be higher than that, but that's kind of our best estimate. Lots of kids though, and, and, you know, we want to intervene as early as possible, right? So this gets to a question of local capacity. A lot of kids can be treated in a general healthcare system if pediatric practices are equipped to do that. And one of the things the state, the, the legislature did was again, create incentives for universities, telehealth and others to work with pediatric practice to try to make it more comfortable for pediatricians to work with kids in particular. Because that's where you pick this up, right? And if, and again, if you wait too long, um, it can create a significant amount of issues. Um, the adults, again, we've same sort of analyses. Uh, if you, we did, we do think there's a, a big gap and we'll talk, this is not blaming the LMHA, I'm not blaming anyone here, but there's a gap in the percentage of folks who need services and the percentage of folks who actually get them. There's a lot of reasons for that. Uh, none of this should be interpreted as the LMHA doesn't do his job. It's simply they live under, you know, world of regulatory and fiscal constraints that makes it difficult. Uh, but we'll get more into this issue. There's clearly, as there are in all communities, and this is about what we find actually the LMHA here reaches more folks than in some other counties. Um, so the, the gap is, is significant here, but not as significant as in some other places. Uh, so, okay, this is what I mentioned earlier. If you look simply at the number of people who accomplish killing themselves, for want of a better term, when you look at the emergency department visits, uh, close to eight hundred folks came to the ED and the ED records reflect that they were there at least in part because of suicide issues or suicidal ideation. So that's a lot of folks. And sort of then what happens to them in terms of care becomes a major issue. But, uh, Judge, I recall, I think you've had an initiative here, or you're, you've got a group looking at this issue out of, because of the suicides in school. And so we want to focus on this issue.
We do. We're very fortunate. The governor has appointed one of our own, Dr. Sissy Pettis, who is really looking at this from a school safety perspective. And, and I should note that in our audiences, our emergency manager, director, and just like opioids, I consider behavioral health an emergency. And anytime, you know, it's scary to me that twenty-five thousand kids in our community have behavioral health needs. And, and if it's more, it just exacerbates, you know, the scenario. But just the idea of that many children, and then of course, when you find out that only thirty-four percent, and this could be more, but if these are our floors, can you imagine our ceilings?
Right.
And that's really what it's meant to reveal. And, and I very glad that you emphasized, this is not a, an opportunity to say, okay, you haven't done it right. That is, if you get that, you've missed the boat. The idea is, is that country, our counties all over Texas and indeed all over our country are wrestling with how to deal with the homelessness issue, how to deal with twenty-two vets killing themselves every day, why children are really and adolescents struggling with their self-worth. And so this is to say, we hear you and we're not going to ignore it anymore. And we know these gaps are here and that's why you're here. And I'm so grateful because I feel like this data is revealing that, thank goodness, we, we started this initiative. And you're right, Commissioner Moniz, it means nothing unless we do something about it. And that's what's exciting about Meadows is that you're not just here to tell us what's wrong with us or where the gaps are. You're really here to kind of see us through this process. So as we go through all this data, just know that he's not gonna, you know, leave us, you know, without, without, I think, a roadmap, if you will, to, to helping our community and its citizens.
The, yes, Judge, the idea is to give you some recommendations that are just not off a shelf, but that actually have been vetted locally. And it's all in the service of trying to, as every, virtually every community in the United States is wrestling with, how do you make the treatment of mental illness something other than a sideshow separate from the general health system? Because as you said, and as this commission's interest indicates, it affects everything government does at some level. And we've, we've now live in a world which schools have to deal with mental illness, even though their primary job is providing education. Criminal justice has to deal with mental illness, even though its primary job is public safety. Uh, foster care has to deal with mental illness, even though its primary job is to deal with families and reunification, what have you. So this affects everyone. And so it's just, it's, it's just a, and so what we will try to give you are where are the points of leverage, where if you can make changes that rep, that are evidence-based, but also fiscally conservative and responsible, because our institute is fiscally conservative in its approach to things. We recognize there's not a billion dollars out there floating around that people have discretionary. So that's part of our philosophy, very much our philosophy.
Data-driven policy decisions.
Yes, very much. If I could just show this one, if you look under total admissions from Nuasis EDs, there's only to non-local psychiatric beds into local psychiatric beds. One of the things I emphasized with the hospital district yesterday, if you come into an emergency department in Nuasis County with a psychiatric, um, disorder, or, or if you're admitted from an emergency department to a psychiatric bed, forty percent of the time that will be to a bed outside of Nuasis County. And so people, this is again, not uncommon. There is a lot of, with mental illness, a lot of people treated outside their communities, but it's a traumatic thing, right? If you come to an emergency department, it's bad enough, it's hard enough. And then forty percent of the time, you will be, um, transported to a hospital, some other part of the state. And that's just, it is sort of why that exists. There's lots of reasons for that, but that's something that is worth noting, I think.
Well, I noted it with a major, big star when I read this report. That is a problem for families. As you said, it's hard enough to deal with the issue and then you put an economic burden on families to have to travel. And then the lack of familial contact because it's difficult because they have to work. I find that a really remarkable statistic and I made a, I'm glad you put that as a summary note because commissioners, that's, that's a very serious issue.
And if you, and if you look at this map, this is, if you're from Nuasis County, um, relatively speaking, uh, about fifteen or eighteen percent of people from Nuasis County are hospitalized elsewhere. But forty percent of the folks who go to the ED are hospitalized elsewhere. But folks from Nuasis County are hospitalized all over the state for psychiatric disorder. And this is sort of that map. And again, that's not, um, necessarily unusual. Um, you've got actually more folks coming into Nuasis County from other counties because, primarily because of Bayview and especially kind of care. But it is in fact the case that, that people are migrated around, uh, all over Texas from their communities for psychiatric inpatient care. We do that with some specialties, but we tend to do it in a more orderly fashion. So MD Anderson, you know, we have specialty hospitals that we preferentially would like to be treated at. But in the context of psychiatric illness, it tends to be more, um, idiosyncratic and ad hoc and, and sort of chance.
Affordable, affordable to me, I mean.
Yes.
It gets expensive.
It is expensive. And, and, you know, again, one of the things the state legislature tried to do last year was put some teeth into parity, uh, because obviously Congress required parity in insurance plans a few years ago between mental illness and general health. But there are lots of ways that it is still not, we've not achieved parity in, in practice, uh, to a large degree. Um, so that- degree. So, that's, again, Commissioner, I apologize for the somewhat scattered nature of the data. We just wanted to give you some sense of the core things to date. I'll, I'll close very quickly with some criminal justice. And this gets to the, the discussion you were having earlier about drug courts and about adding, talking about diversion. Like the county and like most places, we try to organize our look at criminal justice here along various points of the potential criminal justice process. Again, one of the things we tend to do in all communities is rely on the police as a first point of response, which creates its own, once you're in jail, your, your path is irrevocably different in terms of mental illness. There are many institutional pressures that will make it difficult to get you into treatment once you're in jail, including mental health bond requirements and other sort of things. So, the earlier, the better. And one of the things we will likely emphasize with you is, is are there ways to integrate some of the police response into a more general health response, whether it's combining with paramedics or other sort of things? Because we very much unfairly burden law enforcement by, be as if we did this for heart disease, where we'd ask police, does a person have a heart attack? I mean, police end up in that role. But, we do it all the time with mental illness if we send officers out without paramedics and other folks. So, it's, it's, it's as much a burden on police, coupled with the implications it has for the individual, if that's our primary response. We've talked to police in a lot of places, and I'll be curious whether the same here, who because it takes so long to process someone in an emergency room, where you have to put your gun aside, or whatever the rules are of engagement, that from the officer's point of view, they believe it is literally safer for the person simply to put them in the jail, because they know they'll get some minimum care there. And so, that's a dynamic we create by sort of intervening too late. So, this is our framework. We've interviewed folks so far from these various offices, and the number of interviews is far greater than this. And Commissioner, with your point, we will, we've not gotten into the education other systems yet, simply because this was the first deliverable. You've got some interesting things going here with crisis intervention and with jail diversion. We'll have some specific, we have some specific early recommendations, but we want to, out of courtesy to the sheriff and police and other folks involved with this, that those recommendations with them first, to make sure they make sense to them. They're not anything dramatic, but there are some specific recommendations. And, one of the things that, that has been such a nice thing, and, and again, I alluded to this earlier, is that the folks we've talked to from the county, from the city, various law enforcement, whatever, have been very forthcoming. They've been easy to work with, so we very much appreciate that. So, we will do much more with this. This is, again, just a first look. We will vet everything with you all before anything is in final. We will vet everything with the organizations we talk to. If we name an organization or talk about something in a report, we always want to have them have the opportunity to push back first. So, this will, there will be many more iterations before we get to the final. And hopefully, no surprises in what turns out to be the final. So, we appreciate the opportunity to work here very much. It's a lovely community, and it's always nice to be back. When I got out of my car at 2:00 in the morning the other night, though, I thought it was going to be 40 degrees warmer than it turned out to be. So, if you could do something about the weather next time in advance, it'd be very much appreciated. So.
Thank you.
I hope ahead of time we'll see what we can do.
Thank you, Commissioner, very much.
Thank you again. I'm proud of our county, counties initiative in this sphere and grateful to the hospital district, Johnny Hipps here.
Very much.
And when he said he was with the board yesterday, he said he hoped that he wasn't, that he didn't, he said something like, I, I think I bored them. And I thought to myself it was the board, but he said, he was worried that it was too much data all at once. And I said, that's exactly the kind of data that your hospital district needs and values. And quite frankly, I mean, it's a shame we only have a short amount of time, but everybody needs to read this preliminary report, ask as many questions by sending it to, to John's attention and, or, or to myself or to Johnny. So, thanks again.
And I do want to acknowledge, Mr. Hip has been terrific as well, so.
Good. Super.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, appreciate. That's for receiving information only. That was our big one for the day. It's really important that we acknowledge the work that's being done, really countywide. And I'm looking forward, people are, I'm about to write my 2020 goals for the, for myself. And for me, it's about delivering this information to the public. That's my next piece. It's what I learned last week at conference, that the data means nothing unless you share it. And so, I'm, I'm looking forward in 2020 to our first behavioral health, Healthy Nuasis Town Hall, where we can talk to people about this data, so that they're going to feel it. I want them to feel the urgency that I feel, that these are, these are numbers that we need to do something about. So, thank you so much. We're going to number, number, let's see, I know it's Susan Roth, but is she here? She hasn't made it in yet. Let's skip, she's coming in on an airplane, number three. We'll skip, Commissioners, and move to the allied states cooperative contract item number four, 18-7302. This is a purchase of a chiller, Aon chiller, 70 tons, Juan. This is in regards to our ABM Energy Services contract. This is a buy board item.
That is correct, Judge. Judge, Public Works is recommending the replacement of the chillers, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the Aon system at the, at the RMB foregrounds. It is a, a buy board contract, and it's also part of the performance contract with ABM. And we're recommending approval.
What's the funding source? What's the funding source on this?
Funding source, CO 2019.
CO 2019, sorry about that.
That's okay. Just remember, everybody, always tell your funding source. Hold on, Michael wants to say something, but I'll take a second. Got a motion second. Michael, tell us something.
I just wanted to clarify, we use the term buy board.
I know it.
That's an actual branded co-op.
I know it, forgive me.
It's a specific one. This is allied states.
It's like saying every burger's a Whataburger. I get it. Sorry about that. This is an In-N-Out Burger. I got it. I got it. It's allied states. By the way, Whataburger's no longer locally owned, so we can now say we love In-N-Out as much as we love Whataburger. So.
That's a stretch, but okay.
Allied states cooperative contract. Okay, Joel, just, yes, sir, just, it's always good to introduce yourself. Tell people, that way they know you and they can.
This is ABM. Judge, thank you again. This is the same unit that was brought up, I want to say about a month ago. And we're incorporating this into the performance contract. Commissioner Chesney, there is no cost. We're going to be owning that cost until we bring back the performance contract. So, we're going to be installing that unit. This particular unit has much more energy efficiency. It's got variable, variable frequency drives included in it. It's a two and a half, I think it's a six-year higher unit than what was being installed. So, the same price range as far as cost, but a lot more bells and whistles.
Gosh, yeah. And I'm glad you chimed in. Forgive me. You know, I'm just, it's a, it's a capital improvement program identified item. And in my mind, anything CIP's 2019, forgive me, you're absolutely right. This stretches our dollars because of the Energy Performance Savings Contract, and you all will be financing this cost at no cost to the county.
That is correct.
I'm so sorry. And that's my, that's my error. Forgive me.
Any other questions for anybody?
No, no cost is good.
Um, they're going to make really very happy people the fairgrounds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Thanks, guys. The next one is maybe Juan, or let's see, who wants to take this one? This is the resolution approving the construction. It's a collaborative, okay, Edward, this, it's a collaboration with the city on the extension of Junior Beck Drive. It's.
Move passage.
Okay. It's an extensive extension project. Funding source?
Commissioner Jag.
Commissioner Jag, we thank you.
Man, we, let's pass that thing fast.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Thanks to Commissioner Modas, too, because it's also in his precinct.
It's going to benefit Commissioner Modas.
Yeah.
Now, the next portion of that is for the.
Hold on one second, Edward.
I think this is a good deal, because I think it really, Commissioner Modas will probably get a big benefit from it. Most of it's in his precinct, I think, most of it, all of it.
You trying to get money out of him, or what? I hear you.
We need to put some, into it. And we thank Commissioner for working with the city manager on this, to get this moving along, because where, where, where it ended up is right between precincts two and three. So, it will benefit the community. I mean, it's, you know, we're not divided by, by boundary lines. I mean, this will, will help with the businesses there, get, have a pass-through to get south back to 665, rather than having to go back up towards 44. So, yeah.
And I think West Osso will benefit a lot from it, because that'd be the tax base for West Osso.
Commissioners, Judge, there's two portions of that. One is the resolution and one is the actual agreement.
Uh, county attorney, you're gonna need two then?
Yes.
All right. I'll take that first one as the, is the resolution. Okay. And we've got a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. The second piece is, I'll need a motion for the, for the actual, right, the actual agreement that needs to be executed. And a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. That's good. City, county working together. I like that. As you will recall, Commissioners, we already did number six. And just so she can get settled, I noticed that Susan just got here, but we'll give you just a moment, and we'll take item seven, then we'll go back. We skipped item three. But, Maria is here to talk to us about the CDBG disaster, disaster recovery funding app that the GLO is administering. And, and this is, we had an interesting situation, and so, we need to apprise you of it, Commissioners. And I was going to ask the county attorney, since, since it's an alternate program, alternate project within CDBG, if she's going to want a motion to accept this one as the alternate to be moved up for grant funding? Anyway, take a look at it while Maria introduces it. But, you'll recall that many months ago, we approved the, the, the project list that we were going to move forward to the GLO. And then, we've had a change due to information that came to us from the General Land Office that requires us to rethink two of our projects. We went to our alternates, and the first alternate, Commissioner Chesney, you'll see, we have, we've got a pending on that one. So, we've moved to our next alternate that we have a really great case to make for CDBG here. And Maria, with that, I'll, I'll let you tell everybody what that is, what that case is.
So, again, we had originally submitted the application back in August. And while we did believe that we could advance some alternate projects in the Colonia areas, unfortunately, you know, going back to census tract data, they're located in areas that are just kind of way off and are a part of a bigger census tract. So, they don't meet that low to moderate income requirement. And then, also, the only other option to submit for this particular funding is urgent need. And urgent need, you would have to prove, again, tieback to damages related to Hurricane Harvey, as well as, you know, that project would have to, we would have to prove that it poses a serious and immediate threat to health and safety of the community, as well as the local government, which would be Commissioner's Court, would have had to deem it an urgent need immediately during or after the disaster. So, with that, County Road 77, since it was already identified as an alternate project, is probably the best one that we can move forward at this time. We were given a deadline of tomorrow to submit our, our alternate project. And the reason why they're asking for us to pull the HMGP match applications was just the, for the fact that we don't have a grant award at this time, and the GLO is wanting us to complete these projects within 24 months. They will not give any extensions. The timeline moving forward is once they receive the information from us by tomorrow, they are expecting their award decisions to be made in January with contracts beginning in February.
And also, I, I'm going to probably call on Juan here a little bit. This pro, this project, this alternate project, Commissioners, is really one that we've been dying to do. I mean, it, it looks, I don't want anyone to think, oh, we're settling for, this, this is an incredibly important project, because not only does it address the safety issues on County Road 77, but there's an economic development piece to this project as well, with textile manufacturing being right at the cusp of, of this crossroads. And quite frankly, this road was the impediment, if you will, for phase two of that manufacturing. We will make up and add valorum, I promise you, a tremendous amount of gain here if this road gets built. It was so important to me, I was already addressing with financial advisors, the opportunities that, that State Infrastructure Bank, we talked about that, Commissioner Chesney, might offer to us. So, I don't want you to think this is a, oh my gosh, we have to come up with something spur of the moment. This was a high priority road, but it actually meets the LMI requirement, which is pretty hard to do.
Judge, I just move past.
Okay.
I'd just like to say something.
Sure.
Congratulations, you get that road done, John. I'm so disappointed, because it was a chance to help the Colonius, and I, we've got to do something for them, for all of our areas. We have to.
This actually highlights why the Army's mission for May 2020 is so important, because, you know, these specific pockets of areas, in order to help them and in order to prove their low to moderate income status, is only done through door-to-door surveys. So, that's why this Army mission is so important for us to have that data readily available for when opportunities like this come up. We can provide those surveys. Those surveys are good for two to five years, depending on, you know, the funding source.
And I don't know how they do it, and it doesn't matter, but the criteria, all you have to do is go out there and know they're low to moderate income. It's just crazy.
It is crazy.
They've been long forgotten.
It is.
And I hope that this court takes care of them.
And again, back to, you know, the, the census, these census tracts are so large. So, it, it just encompasses just a huge area.
Commissioner, I don't know if you'd be interested, but I think maybe we should all maybe join in a very friendly, but very positively constructed letter to GLO, you know, after we submit, by the way, and really discuss that these were, just kind of an FYI, these projects were not able to be advanced because of X, Y, and Z. And we want you to know it, because we're, Maria and I are on calls every week. Basically, we're, we're supposed to provide feedback on, this is other monies, but same principle. And they need to know where we're having problems, so they know where the rulemaking is, is absolutely not working. So, I think if you will sign for us, or maybe all of us, you know, put, put one in, this could barely be helpful to GLO.
And we do say the funding source is the GLO, but it truly is the United States Housing and Urban Development.
HUD.
You know, HUD establishes these guidelines and, you know, unfortunately, you know.
Right. They're, they're not movable.
Give us the guidance on what to use to prove.
Well, maybe we need to take pictures and send it to them.
I agree.
This is Congressman Cloud's purvey as well. So, again, when we, when we letter write, you know, we, we follow the connect the dots theory. Commissioner Modas, did you want to say something?
Yes, Judge, thank you. I, I agree. I mean, we need to, we were waiting, because if we could have used other funding rather than our own, then that's so much better than we can put into other projects. But, I agree. I mean, they're a priority for us, and we need to take care of it. Like Maria said, the IRT next year, or in a few months, actually, with the military is going to be a big game changer for Nuasis County. And so, I was going to ask Tyner, if you can make sure that we get our June, our January 7th IRT meeting posted, so that all the Commissioners and the judge can be there, because that will help get us really up to speed on some of the projects and the work that's going to be done, that the military's outlining. And this is really one, maybe the second to the last meeting before they come. And so, everything's kind of coming together and, and it gives whoever wants to go a chance to see what's being done, what the plan is with those surveys, because they are going to be important, and, and see what else they have planned on the medical side as well. So, if we can do that, I mean, just so we can have an open invite for everybody to be there.
So, Commissioner Von, actually, if you, I will show you the pri, priority list of the Colonias that I have on that list. And most of them are actually in your precinct. Actually, Country Club Estates West is on the top 10. And that's the, the area that we had talked about.
I know you're trying. I know that. I just, I don't want them forgotten. I think they've been forgotten for years.
Well, really, they've been forgotten for about 50 years. And I will tell you that this is like a passion of Commissioner Gonzalez. But, to be honest with you, this dates all the way back to my uncle and people basically working since the 19, late 1940s and 1950s in the Colonia areas. This is just, it's, it's, it's a pervasive issue and problem on infrastructure. And again, this is the first time that IRT has been used in this way, and we need to really highlight it. So, I'm glad we're going to post the meeting. But, again, it means nothing unless we take the data and use it to drive policy. And, and I think that this community actually met with Secretary Carson on our last CC-to-DC trip. But, next CC-to-DC trip, which is in April, it's too bad, but it, we can at least tell Secretary Carson's that we are about to get this survey, and they need to use this data to make better policy. But, we didn't have, the data is everything. So, let's stay on that. Maria, and this letter writing, it's okay. It's going to be a friendly letter to the GLO, but they need to know where we're having problems, I think.
And, and so, and one last thing, Judge, just to point out, like you mentioned, I mean, this County Road 77 is.
It's a great project.
Huge game changer in that it helps support business that's there. It will help really, help connectivity west of I-69.
really, uh, help connectivity west of I-69, um, and it will connect it with the, with the neighborhoods, with the homes that live out west, but also the business areas and potential business that we see really wanting to line up and down I-69, so, uh, this will have a great impact long-term, uh, for the community.
And Maria, I don't want anyone to come back and say, I wish you would've told us way back when, we noted that the million-dollar, uh, cost estimate, and I'm sorry, let me get the glasses, it's a million.
The cost estimate, so the scope will have to be scaled down just a little
Correct.
To fit what the, the rest of the allocation that we have available, so it won't be the one
Million, it'll be like 658.
It'll be about 650,000.
Correct, and so then the question becomes, well then, if we were to be awarded this grant for CDBGDR money, then how would you pay for the, uh, remainder, and the, and the answer is 2019 CO. Okay. Just so you guys know, in other words, we're only eligible for, we, we're not eligible for the whole million, but it'd be 70%, about 700 grand.
And the
It's pretty darn good.
CCRA DC, and, and I know Juan and Edward have been working with, uh, one of the companies out there as well, that we may actually have them participating in the funding as well, to help offset some of that cost, so then you're talking even a less, uh, amount of us having to commit to.
Thank you, guys. Maria, is that all, do we need an approval, Lauda? I need a motion, please? I've got a, we already have a motion and a second, so it's just a matter of voting then. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. All right, let's go back to number three, so that we can stay, um, timely for, for Ms. Roth. Item number three, I'm gonna consider probably one of the most important of 2019. Uh, we've gotten, that's kinda big, if you think about it, given we just did behavioral health, and I put that up there in my top five, but we have been talking drainage in this county also, for generations, and it's been the will of this court to address it in a significant way. And after significant discussions with city and, uh, Texas A&amp;M, and ourselves as a commissioner's court, we all agreed we needed a point person, uh, for engineering services related to the drainage, drainage master planning and related matters, and today's item number three is to authorize execution of a contract with that, I'm gonna call her a point person, because it's, it's hard to be the coordinator of something like this when we're embarking on Nueces County drainage, it's almost unfair, because no drainage knows boundaries, only we human beings understand that we cross a line, and now we're in San Patricio, or we're in Aransas, or we're in different counties, but the watersheds don't behave that way, so I want us to all recognize what we're talking about, Nueces County drainage, hopefully we're talking about our, our watershed as well, so, um, I'm gonna suggest that, um, if it's all right, Tyner, um, I don't know if you have anything to add here, but I would like to invite Ms. Roth, um, who would be, uh, who is up for this selection under the personal services contract, to come and introduce herself, and give us a little bit of your background. By, by trade, you're, as they say, we're gamara, you are also an engineer by training, uh, but you are a civil engineer by training, and would you share a little bit about your background, Ms. Roth?
Yes, thank you so much, Judge, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and meet with you all today, and commissioners, thank you again for your time, and appreciate being able to join you all today, and again, my name is Susan Roth, I have a consulting firm, Susan Roth Consulting, in Austin, I've been a civil engineer, gosh, I have over 20 years of experience, I have my bachelor's in civil engineering from Texas A&amp;M in College Station, and then I have my master's in civil engineering from University of Texas at Austin, um, I'm
You cover all the bases.
Would've been good in any court, just so you know.
Did you go to
That's right.
Did you go to TCU by any
But I will say, I had some friends that asked me to come to tech to get my doctorates, 'cause they thought that would make me more well-rounded.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so I'm just considered a half-breed at this point, thank you. But, um, so, a little bit about my background, I've worked both in private engineering consulting as where, as well as on the public side, I worked for Lower Colorado River Authority for a number of years before starting my own business 12 years ago. Um, I'm currently actually the, the president for the American Society of Civil Engineers for the state of Texas right now, and, um, and I've worked with a number of communities and counties around the state, kind of what my, I guess my niche, or what I've been really focusing on these past, gosh, almost like 15, over 15 years at least. Um, prior to that, I was working predominantly on water treatment plant design, and then once I came over to LCRA, it was great, 'cause I served as a senior engineering planner, and worked with a lot of communities as LCRA was acquiring different water and wastewater systems, and that's kinda how I got into the, as I call it, kinda the grant side, the grant writing component of engineering, with my engineering background. But worked with a lot of communities, and really helped them map out, like, a regional plan, whether it's water supply, water infrastructure, drainage, it's a regional approach, and getting everybody to come to the table, and working together, and putting together basically a roadmap for you guys to follow. And then from that roadmap, then what I've been assisting folks with is then, it kind of, it, it just, I wanna say, it's a natural progression, because then you're set up well to go to Texas Water Development Board, uh, Texas Department of Agriculture, the GLO, all of the different, um, agencies here in the state to apply for funding, so then it's like you've done the proper planning, and you've kind of, like I say, you've, you've laid out your roadmap, you have your list of prioritized projects that you're looking at, you've got all of your key stakeholders on board, which is very important, and then, like I say, you can then successfully be able to obtain grants, very attractive financing from a lot of these different entities, and so that's really what I've been working on, you know, predominantly for most of my career, so, that's a little bit about myself.
Yes, thank you, Susan, for that background, and, and of course, the Water Development Board has become very important to many commissioners' courts, as also because of, um, a proposition that was recently passed to allow 1.7 billion dollars of, um, funding from the Rainy Day Fund to be, you know, available to jurisdictions at very low interest rates. This is in addition to the $4 billion that is available through, again, HUD, CDBG, uh, recovery money, that, uh, can also be used for flood mitigation projects, and so your familiarity with TWDB is very, um, very appealing, uh, to me as a county judge, as it would be to any county judge chasing dollars. One of the things I kinda wanted to help, uh, the commissioner's court is, uh, when we embarked in this concept, you're not here to actually perform the, um, your contract would not be to perform the drainage study per se, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you, can you just give a little background as to, tell them what are you gonna do, people are listening, and we're involved right now with a lot of interesting projects that are happening now, one in Petronila with a TCEQ grant that's pending, one on North Beach that we're gonna be working environmental and permitting on, and then every precinct here, it's an equal opportunity situation, we all have bad drainage, we all have interest, so you don't have to worry that it's just one of us, as they say, you got us all. But tell us about what your scope of work is, so that the audience and the people at home really know what it is that we're gonna do with you, and what, where we're gonna go with your services to get to step two.
That sounds great, Judge, yes, a little bit about, um, kinda the scope of work, well, really quick, I'm glad that you highlighted on the HUD funding, like, through GLO, besides Texas Water Development Board, because as I was driving over here, I was noticing on the list that you guys are one of the 23 counties that's in the high prioritized area, and so that will be excellent for you guys, from that standpoint. Um, but yes, as far as, um, just kinda quickly, just to run through what my services would entail, because I'm a one-person shop, and so what I've typically done is I've worked with a number of colleagues or different engineering firms, where, where I will partner with them, I have the relationships with Texas Water Development Board, just from, again, over the years with working at LCRA, and then also, you know, with TDA, GLO, all of those agencies, that's what's really ideal with me being in Austin. So then what I can be able to help you guys with is, one, just to craft your scope of work, help make sure the scope of work aligns with what Texas Water Development Board, I wanna say, just their requirements for the funding, and making sure that you guys are, I wanna say, that you haven't left out any key components that would disqualify you or make you not rank as high. Right now, the way the Water Development Board is laying out this flood infrastructure funding, it's actually through Senate Bill 7, that what they're looking at, the Flood Infrastructure Fund, or the fifth, what they're saying is that they will pretty much conduct it like the State Revolving Fund for clean water and drinking water, kinda in that same fashion, so you've gotta make sure that your application ranks high, because you're gonna be ranked on a, um, Intended Use Plan, or the IUP is what they call it. So, um, so with that being said, I would help assist with the scope of work, I would help serve, um, I wanna say, putting together the RFQ, and helping with the solicitation process, as far as scoring if needed, for the engineering consulting firm that would come on board to conduct the actual modeling, and, and I wanna say, the hydraulics for the study. Um, I would also be putting together the flood infrastructure funding application to Texas Water Development Board and GLO, or, well, we can discuss which agencies we wanna reach out to, but that's what I would suggest, um, helping to put together the, you know, required letters of assurance, helping with the resolutions, most of all, just making sure, as far as with other stakeholders, I can definitely help with that, as far as if, you know, looking at, and again, I'm glad that you highlighted that you're looking at watersheds, it's not like you're looking at county boundaries, or, you know, or city boundaries, city lines, you're looking at, from a watershed perspective, and so looking at, say, like partnering with Clayburg, or any other counties where it makes sense based on the watersheds, and where you've got your drainage issues. I wanna say, besides that, um, providing, okay, besides putting together the scope of work, I would help manage the engineering consultant, making sure, again, just with their work product, reviewing the technical reports, reviewing their technical data that they would be producing, again, just making sure that you're getting the proper work product, I would be acting on your behalf, basically, so almost, I, I kinda almost say it as like an extension of staff, that's the way I would love to serve you guys, and so
But this was all, this is what you'll be doing exclusively, which is so
Yes.
It's a, a linear focus on drainage.
Yes.
And have you also worked with, um, for example, we've been approached by Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, because they actually do some very clever 3D modeling, and it's proprietary software, and they definitely wanna partner with the city in the county, but again, um, to use the old expression, herding cats, it, we really needed somebody to help facilitate, so that we're not duplicating services, and that we're working towards a common goal with a common goal line, is that something that you would also assist with?
Oh, yes, and I have a lot of experience with this, a lot of different regional studies that I've worked on, I just wrapped up one for the Texarkana area, and I had 15 cities, um, I had, um, international paper, I had, you know, different commercial and industrial, you know, I wanna say, components to the project, so I'm used to, I like how you call it herding cats, I'm used to working with a number of, like I say, project, you know, participants is what I call them, and just making sure, again, that everyone knows what they need to be working on, just so that no one duplicates efforts, and again, especially like with, uh, Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, where there's times for different funding opportunities, you can use that as, as like an in-kind service, or as a, as a match. So a lot of these programs will not require a match, or at least for GLO, from the, from the MIT, the CDBG MIT funds, you will not re, be required to provide a match, but, um, Water Development Board and some of the others, you will need to look for some creative ways to kinda stretch the funds.
So with that as a background, and what a tremendous background it is, um, could I have, um, I'd like to open it up for you all to discuss or have questions, but could I get a motion at this time? A motion, thank you, and, and Commissioner Gonzalez, a second? Motion and a second, and I'd ask, any commissioners, you're welcome to chime in if you'd like, or ask any questions, or thoughts?
I'm really excited about this, I'm glad that she brought it forth, and it looks like you have a great resume, and I like the idea that you have a regional approach, because that's our problem, it comes all the way down to each of our counties, from other counties down to us, so, Judge, I was sold at the beginning.
That's great, anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, actually, I think we've asked Susan, and I'm not sure what your schedule allows, but we're ripping through our agenda here, if time does allow, we'd love to tell you about the two projects that we do have pending, one is a very exciting, um, project that was brought forth by Judge Madrid that we joined in, it, it's really meant to make a difference in Baffin Bay, but it affects drainage all throughout Nueces County, and then the second is the North Beach, uh, project that has a, just a unbelievable potential, but has a terrific drainage issue. So if you can stick around, we'd love it, if we can't, we'll get you by telephone. Uh, all those in favor signify, yes, yes, sir.
Question, um, the, the funding on this will come
I'm sorry, CO 2019, you'll recall that we put some dollars away for facility studies, and we've, Dale, I don't remember the number on that one, but
We haven't created a number yet.
We need to create a number. But it is, uh, part of the facility studies, and it's, it was specked under, on your CIP, stormwater drainage.
Let me blow this up, Judge, real quick.
Sure, what you mean to show us?
Oh, well, we just indicate that it's new project number 1923 XXXX.
Right, and, you know, Tyner, while we've been up here, I just got the final analysis, we're gonna have to change the words tax notes, uh, to COs, because we're, we've been finalized.
As, as of today.
As of, as of about an hour ago, it came across my screen. We are official.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much, Brent, for keeping us, and we need to remember to do that, every project. Susan, did you wanna say something in closing? Did I vote, Madam Clerk? All those in favor?
There's two, there's two, uh, actions you'll have to take, this one is a selection
And then the second's the contract. Oh, well, I'll take the first motion as a selection, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same motion on the second.
And same motion on the second, and I've got a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, okay, did you, I'm sorry, I cut you off, Susan.
Oh, no, it's, it's all, all fine, I'm just very excited to work with you guys, and I just really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Susan.
And, and I'm here the whole day, by the way.
Wonderful, I just know that some commissioners have said, hey, will she be available to talk to? As I said, everybody has drainage issues, we're an equal opportunity on that, thank you so much.
I look forward to visiting with each of y'all about
The horse come from Jewell's.
Yes, but that might be someone we need to talk to. Thank you, Susan, thank you so much.
Thank you so much again.
Moving along, uh, we have a, a revised holiday schedule that was approved in last commissioner's court, and Julie's here to tell us what our issue is. We thought we had a perfect solution, and as it turned out, it created a perfect problem, and so we have a new opportunity here to correct that, Julie, tell us about the issue, and then the correction for their consideration.
Well, as it seemed, the schedule was pretty perfect, but then we started getting a bunch of phone calls, and we, as being HR, and Dale's office on the schedule, um, because of the half a day, and we have employees that work 10-hour shifts in public works, so that's not a very good schedule for them, um, because some days they're off, some days they only work four days in a week, and then there's the Sheriff's Department that has longer shifts as well, 12-hour shifts, um, so the four hours wasn't gonna be feasible to get somebody else on the schedule, or just to have them work four hours, and then they have to work the other possible eight hours that day, so that wasn't gonna work for them either. So, um, that's why we brought it back, to revisit it, um, so we can make everybody happy, instead of
Right, and there's a real difficulty on payroll, Dale.
Yeah, the, the process, as Julie was saying, the main portion is how I would handle those that are, are either on 10-hour shift or 12-hour, 12-hour shifts on, on working those in, and then how we make sure we, we keep our payroll working correctly, 'cause right now, our payroll system, it, it's real tricky how we, we function through a half a day, so we're recommending doing this on either a day before Thanksgiving, or a day before Christmas, whatever y'all decide, would be the best to do a full day, and another issue coming up, uh, on the floating holiday, when, once we get this situated, I've got a question on the floating holiday, whenever we get to that, that point.
So my recommendation, after visiting with HR, is to choose the Christmas, um, holiday.
I agree.
I met with about 18 people yesterday, just, and I did a little survey, you know, and, uh, they, uh, wanted the one whole day instead of the half a days also.
Right.
And if, and they chose Christmas, Christmas is number one, you know, that if we're gonna get an extra day, do it in Christmas.
Okay.
Or, or the Monday after Easter, but most they wanted the Christmas, you know.
So what, 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 last time it was, we gave
So we did half-days.
We had two half-days of four hours on, on
And then we added
Thanksgiving, and four hours for Christmas. So now we want to combine those four and four to make one full day of eight hours.
Rather than giving two half-days, um, we're gonna go back to just one holiday, one day, one day extra.
Correct.
Well, y'all already approved the, uh, Good Friday, which is additional holiday.
That's correct. So I'm sorry that we could not make that work, but I think, honestly, you know
Maybe the Monday after, I, I just, I'm, I'm, I, I'm concerned over three full days of the courthouse being closed, I might revert back, if we're gonna have to go to a day to the Monday after Easter, I, I mean, because I'm just concerned about three full days of shutdown.
Right, and we also talked, uh, a lot about, you know, skeleton crews, and, and the issues that, that would be required, Julie, do you wanna address that?
I think departments handled, uh, skeleton crews already on their own, just to make sure that there is somebody available, and some people, some departments leave one or two people, or maybe even more employees behind, um, just to manage their department and keep it open anyway, so that's already being done throughout the courthouse.
But it's not a requirement, and that's
It's not a requirement. It's not a requirement.
Talk about dealing with services for the community. And so I do, I mean, I, I was all about this and I started thinking about that since the last meeting. It's like, man, that is a long time. And, and I think that we do, that we were, you know, we have a responsibility to stay open on days when the public-
Right.
It is more opportune for them to be there. And I'm not saying we should take it away. I'm saying have the same amount, but-
Maybe another-
Give some flexibility, you know, add it on at the beginning of the break or the, the end, or just go to a, a pure floating. But, um, when we know some departments do, but others don't, I think that that poses a problem. It's like, well, do I show up? Do I call? And then you get here, it's just, it creates an issue. So I, I mean, I may be stating the, you know, the obvious here, but I, I do have a concern when we talk about closing off that month.
It's on a Thursday and a Friday.
What's that?
Correct. The 24th and the 25th are Thursday and Friday. And the day we're talking about right now is Wednesday, the 23rd.
Right. I, I'm, I am all about giving more days. I, I'm very concerned about closing three days in a row when the public needs us to be open and when people at the end of the year are looking to get things done and stuff like that. So I'm open to suggestion for another holiday that gives them, because I want to give these people another holiday. I just don't want to close three days in a row. And I just wanted to point out, if you do those three days at Christmas and the weekend gets involved, it's possible the courthouse could be shut down for five days in a row with, if Christmas falls on the weekend.
So with, with those considerations, I would entertain a motion then, um-
I don't know what the right thing is. I mean, maybe it's the Monday after Easter, maybe it's another, is there another one weekend?
President's Day is another day in February.
We can put in another day, just to, I'm, I'm all for the holiday. I just don't want to close-
There's Columbus Day in October that, when I did a survey, these were some of the ser, uh, the holidays that other entities were taking, which is-
Well, and-
Columbus Day in October and President's Day in February.
I think you also in Easter, they get, the, people travel, want to travel somewhere in Easter, they come back Monday, whatever.
Correct.
And it's, you know, and they, it's the day, Easter's the day they party all day long, you know? So I think Monday after Easter would be a-
And this year, I believe that Hanukkah's on the 23rd. So.
I'm going to go with Monday, Monday Easter.
So a, as I said, I mean, it presented an issue. We felt we could not solve that issue without you. And so it's here on this agenda. And as I said, um, I'll take a-
If everybody wants the Monday after Easter, that would be two days that would be closed over Easter, but not three.
All right.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so I'll-
Three days.
Motion, Brent? I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. So Julie, we're going to go with our-
Monday after.
Monday after Easter and we appreciate that.
While we're talking about the, uh, last court, we also approved a, a floating, uh, vaca, holiday. Uh, the question I have resolving around the floating holiday is, uh, we're going to set it up as a, a, another bank in the, in the employee's part where they either collect vacation or sick leave or, or holiday and it's an eight-hour, eight hours or eight-point-six, wherever it might be the case. But my question is if the employees unable to or not, does not use the eight hours in the full year, what does the court wish, wish for us to do?
No, 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 hold on. Now we're getting crazy again. Let's make it easy. Let's go find another day. I mean, again, we want to give them the day, that's fine. Let's do President's Day or Columbus Day and let's just take that away because I am not trying to create another nightmare for accounting.
Yes.
I want to help.
They want to get paid during the year.
Yeah, yeah, right. I don't want to have to mess with that. So if we want to do another one, then there's Columbus, there's Presidents', there's, I mean, I, again, I think we all want to give these people more time. That is the consensus, but I do not want to make it a nightmare for accounting.
Yes.
There's also New Year's Eve that was considered.
The end of the year's tough too. I, I, I don't know.
Tax office.
Oh, man, yeah.
Need that time.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be scared to do that one.
I, I agree, but-
And Columbus Day, soon to be, soon to be Indigenous or Native American Day, most likely, is a holiday that has a lot of school ramifications, so that might be a good one. In other words, there's a lot of schools that have that-
I don't know if they do as much, do they?
Some do, I, I've seen it on fall breaks, they do, they do that one because, well, listen, again, I'm here to entertain the motion. I know that these are-
When is President's Day?
February.
Well, let's look at it, let's look at it, let's look at a strategic month that gives them another break during the year. I mean, like, we've got two holidays in January, we've got one in April, one in May, one in July, September, November, December, maybe, and then we just gave them another one in, uh, April, so we could look at March, we could, if there's something in March, we-
President's Day, that's in February, there's not-
It'll be Monday, February 17th.
Good, that's good.
We'll go on spring break.
Yeah, and federal government, federal government's office.
And the banks are usually closed on President's Day.
There's a lot of closed on President's Day, yeah.
I mean, I don't think anybody's going to gripe about the fact that we're giving them more holidays, so I hope they don't.
They're not going to say how to want it.
Yeah. Well, Commissioner Gonzalez, who's 24/7, he never takes holidays, so I mean, I get that, man.
Okay, so I'll take a motion.
So move on the, on the, on the-
President, yes ma'am.
That's true. Be clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe what you can do is make a motion to rescind-
Yes.
Whatever actions you have taken and now just say whatever you want to do.
That's my motion.
Okay, his motion is to rescind the, the former, um, revi, yeah, floating holiday and replace with a new holiday to be on the 2020 calendar, which is the President's Day holiday, February 17th.
And we probably need to do that for the one we've already done too, just to be clear for the record, but we can do this one first and, or second his motion and-
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. And just please go ahead and I know we gave everybody notice about the past, but let's, let's communicate clearly.
The day after Easter is gone?
I'm, no, no, I'm going to, I'm going to, no, no, this is an addition to that.
We sent in the half-days where we sent-
That one just, that one removed the, um, floating holiday, then I'm going to go back, I guess, and we need, whoever made that first motion, maybe me, I don't know, to rescind the motion, we're going to rescind, um, the two half-days and make that the day after Easter to make that clear for the record.
Take that motion for the-
Which is Monday, April 13th.
Monday, April 13th.
And, and, and renew it?
Renew.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Thank y'all.
And, and Julie, I think it'd be great if you sent something out-
I will.
Everybody that told everybody that we are adding these days and that we really, as a court, appreciate all the hard work that our employees do and that's why we're doing this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. At this time, we'll receive a report on the Alliance for I-69 and approved payment of invoice for membership. And Tyner, you can pass those out and just for your information, I recently attended on behalf of Noises County, the annual I-69 conference in Houston, where I joined with members of I-69 Alliance and other alliances, I-14 and all over the, the country and, um-
Judge, just for discussion, can I, and you can keep talking, but I just want to make a motion to approve the payment of the invoice for membership.
Right. I was going to say, we've been a part of this. As you know, Judge Neil, I think chaired I-69 for many years.
Admit hello.
And I'll take a motion in a second that's been given, Chesney Gonzalez for the clerk. And, uh, if there's any questions, um-
Very important stuff.
It is very important and, and we have to, um, I just visited with Larry Myers, who's the legislative consultant on this at the federal level. And just so you know how important our advocacy is, both our United States Senators had not been advocates of this. And because of our advocacy, this past year, Senator Cornyn did advocate for transportation dollars. And so I just want you to know that we are making an impact. It's very important that they know, that they hear from our community. And I hope you saw that, um, I did a, an op-ed on this very issue in, in the newspaper on I-69, so. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. And again, you can read this for, for information. The next one is the, um, is item number 10, and it's discuss and consider options, um, for funding a drainage project, including permitting and environmental assessments for the city of Corpus Christi and Noises County collaboration on North Beach and tax reinvestment zone number four. And Tyner, I'm confused on this one because-
Commissioner Gonzalez asked me to copy it from the last-
Oh, I see. Okay. Commissioner, I'll let you take the lead.
I think last, at the last meeting, we, um, I wouldn't have had voted yet because we're going to bring it back up again to try to have more, I guess, to call it teeth in the game or more skin in the game, whatever they want to call it.
Right.
And I think if we really want this project to happen and really want to be part of this, I think that we should have more skin in the game. You know, my last, uh, recommendation was that we do $2 million, you know, whether it be 1 million after construction, 1 million at 75% completion, you know, and, and, I mean, if, I think you want it to happen, we need to, we need to have some skin in the game. And will we get the money? I don't know, maybe the CEO 2019, but, um, I was going to go for 3 million, but I think I'm going to save 1 million to hope we get the drainage in precinct one and two at the Fiesta, clean that dish clean that John Motters and myself, Commissioner Motters and myself have a lot of trouble with, the drainage. And, uh, but I think that just to me, I think, uh, we just need to be serious about it too, if we really want it, and we need to really be involved with it. You know, I know the, I know the city's putting in the 41 million dollars and, and I don't know what else, but I think that, uh, this to us will, will show them that we're, we're interested, you know, and we can give it to them at the end and give it to them at 75%. I don't, it really don't make any difference, but I think we just need to have something also, Rick, that we're willing to back them up with.
Right. I, and I really appreciate that. Yesterday, the tax increment reinvestment zone number four did meet and Commissioner Vaughn and I were there. And I just want to give you a quick update because I think it'll affect, uh, your, your, your wish. And that is, is that at the next meeting they put on future agendas is to discuss the funding source. And what I'm wondering is if maybe we could, um, alter your motion just so that they can have that piece of it done first and that, that we maybe, I'd be in favor of creating a motion that they collaborate with us on how, what we can do more. In other words, let's see what funding source they come up with and what it is that they need. I can tell you that, uh, for example, now that we've approved as a court Ms. Roth, I can tell you that that's going to be an important, um, partnership that we, that we're not asking them to pay, right? She'll be able to be a resource that this county pays for. I also firmly believe we need to engage in a public finance law person, which, guess what? We have her. Her name is Blakely Fernandez and she's with Bracewell and she already has a scope that works, but it will cost some dollars to get these inter-locals, um, penned. And she could also be a part of our resource of county funds that are being expended on this project. And I would entertain other, uh, ideas, but I think the city maybe should bring them to us because that's what they're, that's what's up on their next agenda is to figure out what, so I guess what I'm saying is they haven't identified their funding source yet and maybe we should let them do that. But I would entertain a motion to collaborate with the city on funding sources.
Judge, I, the other thing too, I think we need to make note of is the TERS itself that we are participating in, that we are already putting money into by the fact that we are, that, we are already putting money into, um, and a significant portion of that was designated for drainage specifically. So I, I do think we have a lot of skin in the game in this thing in regards to the fact that it's a city project and the county is participating in it as well. So I, I, I don't, I think you're right. I think there's a lot of money that's already going into this that maybe, I'll call them soft cost, if you will, that, that need to be kind of added up to, um, as well, because I, I do think we, we definitely have skin in this game for sure.
And the other thing that we heard yesterday, Commissioner Vaughn, at this meeting was that the canal is only, it's the core of the solution, but it's not the only thing needed. There's elevation and perhaps, uh, breakwater could also be a mitigating factor. Um, but having said that, one, one thing we could also consider, and I would really welcome this, is that I would like to proceed with, uh, pursuing grants as a funding source. That takes up dollars, you know, in-house here, but it's worth it with the mitigation money that's out there. And I would like to pursue, um, I'd like for the county to, I'd like for us to authorize our grant department to work with, um, everybody, including the city, but especially now that we have a point person to pursue a grant for 40, for $50 million, whatever the, the cost will be. And it would be a backstop. I mean, obviously we, we don't know we'll get the grant, but we should at least pursue that. And that would be a real interesting skin in the game, uh, piece. Ms., Ms. Vaughn?
I agree with you. I, I think the grants would be the most important thing that we can do because we have grant writers, they don't. And I appreciate what Jag's saying, that he wants more skin in the game, but it is a city project. They have, should have done it a long, long time ago and I think they need to be the one that says, hey, this is where we're going to get the funding. I don't, I don't want us to jump in and offer anything like that. I think just the permitting gave us skin in the game and if we offer the grants, I think that's huge. If I had a million dollars, I'm not being ugly, I would be spending in the colonias right now to get those done.
Well, that's the other million dollars I'm talking about too, Commissioner.
Well, I was-
2019 that we could use it to clean the canal or the drainage area on Fiesta and also Petronilla. We need that real bad.
And, and honestly, I think that's an excellent, that's, that's why I want Ms. Roth to kind of hang around Noises for a few more hours, because I just want her to hear what our, what our prioritization and our pressing items are. And I think that would be welcome, but I tell you what I, what I have learned and, um, uh, and that is, is that creating a strategic plan is really important. And what I'm hearing you say is welcome, which is I'm ready to put more dollars in. I am too. But I was hoping Ms. Roth would hit the ground running and tell us what she thinks A, inappropriate amount of dollars would be based on an evaluation of the project, which she hasn't had a chance which she hasn't had a chance to look at yet. And then we could come back. But what I'd love to see is could I persuade you to amend your motion for skin in the game to be to authorize this court to pursue any and all funding that would come through MIT money? That would be CDBG MIT, Go Mesa, NIFWIF, I'm going to name them all, TWDB, Prop as basically SB seven, and others to get additional funding because what helps our brothers and sisters, the City of Corpus Christi, as I told someone yesterday, in case I'm wrong on this, let me know. But the City of Corpus Christi is inside of Nuesis County. And so it's proper that we discuss this as drainage. But would you consider that as an opportunity until Ms. Roth has a chance to look at all the projects? And then she can give us some recommendations on dollars that we could allocate for all the different draining projects?
I would consider the two million, yes, but the one million for the canal or the drainage over there in Fiesta? I mean, I think that needs to be done sometime soon.
Right, I just would like for her to really look at it and give us an assessment on what she thinks might be appropriate, given all the different funding sources and what we could bring. And then I need to be able to reallocate, oh, hello, Elva, reallocate with Auditor's Office some of our other projects. I mean, would that be a motion, a motion to, let me see if I can consolidate using some of the words that were here. I would like to make a motion to consider options for funding be pursued with our consultant, Ms. Roth, for Nuesis County's collaboration with the City of Corpus Christi on North Beach. And, but to include all funding sources and to make a recommendation to this court what could be appropriate. And that would be putting a grant in for all forty million dollars the canal would cost, but not to exclude cash options that this county could invest from certificates of obligation because drainage is such a serious issue.
Judge, I cannot support that. I do, I agree with Commissioner Vaughn. I do not want to put out there that we're now going to start getting involved in spending millions of dollars of county money over to do for the city. And when you say all funding sources, then that alludes to the fact that we are considering doing that. And I get that Commissioner Gonzalez is, but I am not considering that. And if the rest of the court does, then I get outvoted, I get outvoted. But we have millions of dollars of needs in county projects that the city will never help us with, nor should they because they have their own thing. So I believe we have plenty of skin in this game. I'm all for anything you want to do with grants and Ms. Roth.
That's what I was saying.
But you were saying, well, but you were saying all sources and possibly cash options, and I do not support that.
Well, when you do an assessment, you have to do a comparative analysis, right?
I'm just saying, I don't want to allude to, I don't want to-
Why don't you make an amendment to that, to talk about all funding sources? That, just so you know, the MIT money must be collaborative money. You're going to have to join the cities.
The MIT money's different. I just was saying, I don't want to spend CO money.
I want to go get for MIT money and for grant money.
Okay, we can make that.
No, MIT, wait, let me see, what's, and MIT money is?
Is CDBG.
Okay.
Okay, that's that four billion dollar flood mitigation.
As long as it doesn't go away from the colonias and things, because we, again, we all agree that these colonias need attention. And I'm just scared to death to take anything away from that if we've actually got some opportunities with this MIT money to do it. So I, that's, I just want to, I just want to make sure the motion is tight.
I'm fine with that.
I agree with him. Let me just say this, this is a utility project for the City of Corpus Christi. I was on that council. They have money to do it if they want to do it. If we go throw in ours in, they would gladly take it, I'm sure. But I'm with you, we have so many projects here. I'm for doing the grants and-
And the collaborative MIT money.
Yes.
And the collaborative, the collaborative MIT money.
If it's helping with grants and MIT money and-
Okay, well, then it sounds like we have a motion. I know the clerk must, going to probably want some clarity, but it's basically to authorize, you know, moving forward with the opportunities that the grants and just put all grants, all funding sources related to grants, okay?
That's fine, yes, ma'am, I second that motion. Anything we can collaborate with, I mean, I hope they would collaborate with us. You know, I mean, if there's projects that they would maybe be able to help us with that they can collaborate with, not spend their money on it, but if they can collaborate with us on grants.
Well, and I want to echo what we said yesterday, which is that the TERS refinancing plan does have, and we'll get Ms. Roth the copy of it, does have some dollars allocated to drainage. I, we all believe in this court that a TERS is an economic incentive tool. It's meant to provide economic incentives over time. That would take, it would take all twenty years to accumulate enough money to build a canal. So, you know, we want to keep those economic incentives in place. That's the whole reason to do the canal is to solve the drainage problem so that then it spawns economic investment that would get money from the increment value that would pay for all the other projects. And so I agree that it's a mandate for the city. But as we discuss drainage, we're in the catbird seat here to really be able to assist on the grants because of the resources that obviously we've just employed. So having a motion and a second, I'm going to take it as Commissioner's motion. Gonzalez and Brent, would you be kind enough to second on the grant solely?
Oh, I thought you made it and I seconded you.
Well, that's fine.
Whatever, I'm, I don't-
Okay, motion and a second.
Right.
And then all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, and then this one is on kind of as a repetition, but do we have an update?
We're finalizing, they have the last revisions, but it's not ready to go forward today.
Okay.
And we're going to try again for January.
All right, so I'm going to have a motion to table, please, for January eighth on item number eleven.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, okay, so moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And then Juan, take us through public grants. I'm sorry, public grants, public works. The operative word today apparently is grant in my head. Sorry about that, Juan.
That's fine. Commissioners, Judge, on item number one, Public Works is recommending the approval of the detective change order number two for County Road thirty-five, paving improvements from Saratoga to County Road thirty-six.
Do I have a motion for that?
Moved.
A motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. I didn't rush that one because the next one is give us a report on it.
Yes, ma'am.
So now you're going to tell us about the completion of County Road thirty-five.
That is correct, Judge. I did a quick presentation on County Road thirty-five. This is a project that was completed in November timeframe of this year. It's about a mile width of road. It's from Saratoga to County Road twenty-six. That's what's shown on the aerial. The next slide is, kind of gives you a detail of the project. The contractor was Garrett Construction. The engineer was OJ, OJA Engineering. The geotech was Tulay One. Again, the road was about a mile stretch of road. The contract got awarded back in April of this year. And the notice to proceed to the contractor was done in May. The original contract amount was for four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and fourteen and fifty cents. The final contract amount with this change order is going to be four seventy-four, nine twenty-four, fifty. The total contract time is ninety days. And the final walkthrough on the project was December, I'm sorry, November twenty-second. The actual contract of the project was a total of one hundred and fifty-eight days. The reason for that, Judge and Commissioners, is because the contractor had laid SMF and done some grading that didn't meet the specifications. There were some slopes that were exceeding, I mean, there were some slopes that didn't meet the two percent slope. And in addition, the densities of the hot mix were not met. So the contractor had to go back and redo pretty much the whole hot mix. They removed it and they had to go back and replace it. So those were one of the items, or a few of the items that we had issues with the contractor. We did extend their contract. We did do the liquidated damages. The total liquidated damages was for thirteen thousand, one ninety. The thirteen thousand, one ninety was to pay OJA for their time extension because they had to have some more inspection time out there. And then also, we had to pay for the retesting of the work that they had not passed. So that was part of the, to pay that back. So since we did have some of these issues with the contractor, the contractor did extend the warranty to a two-year warranty versus a one-year warranty. So we did get a two-year warranty, we are going to get a two-year warranty on this project. I had to put some photos together. Another issue that we did have during this project was, if you see the left photo, the contractor extended the pavement beyond, and you kind of see that it kind of squiggles around. They didn't do a line so that way they could have a true straight line. So what they had to do is, if you look at the photo on the right-hand side, they had to saw cut the pavement, and then they had to kind of clear out the pavement and then load it up and haul it off. The bottom picture kind of shows the, kind of like the final product of the pavement. This is our crews. Our crews also assisted. Once the contractor finished up the project, our crews went out there and we kind of started clearing up the brush. There were some trees that were in the right-of-way and some vegetation. And our crews went out there and kind of cleared all that, all that, the brush. On the right-hand, you do see part of our inspections. When they did the second part, we did go out there and we did measure the elevation, the depth of the hot mix. And if you see to the backside, we do have a smart level to make sure that the, that the, that the pavement met the slopes, which was a two percent slope or a three percent slope. They did have a slope between two to three percent. After a heavy rain event, after this project was completed, that's another way of determining if the water is running off the road. We did go back out there and we did evaluate that the water did shed off the road like it should so that way you don't have ponding on the road. And then this is the final product. This is kind of, I mean, could have gotten better pictures, but this is the final product. The one on the left, the sweeper's cleaning the road. And then on the right, it's the finished product of the road. You do see that seam in the middle? That seam, that seam in the middle is a seam that you do have to have. And the reason behind that is because you have to overlap, you have to overlap the hot mix. So within time and traffic starts going into it, it'll start leveling itself off. You don't want to have a, I'm going to call it a seam where you have the hot mix tied into the next one because then you'll have a center part where the water will get into and intrude into the base. So you do want to have that overlap on the hot mix. That is a requirement.
Is that a dip when you drive?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, it's within time, they did roll it. And if you go down like seventy-seven or some of these other highways, you do have that seam. And within time, it'll start, it'll, it'll, you won't see it.
Let me ask you something. Someone asked me the other day, why don't we stripe our line in the middle? I had some, an older person tell me, we can't see when it's foggy. Why don't you have the stripe? Is it because of cost?
That older person was me, Juan, so I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, it's a great point.
Yeah, well, one is, one is cost, Commissioner. We don't do striping on our roads. If you wind up striping all our roads, we'd be out there.
Well, I understand why they'd be concerned about that, the elderly as they get older, it's hard to see. You know, Brent?
And I'll look into it, Commissioner, but that it is a maintenance cost and it is-
I figured that's what it was, that's what I told them.
Is that best practices in other counties? Do you have?
No, in other counties, you're pretty much the same, same, Judge.
County roads don't have the stripe.
No, no, most county roads don't have a stripe.
I'm saying ninety-nine percent.
That's what I'm saying, what's best practices?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, Juan, we included the hydroseeding on that.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. Once, once, once the contractor graded the ditches, we did hydroseate the bare areas so that way we can get some vegetation and we can maintain so we don't have erosion alongside the roads.
Okay, great.
What was the cost of this hydroseeding plus the road?
Commissioner, I think it was put about fifty, under about forty K or something like that, Commissioner? Is that correct? About thirty-something thousand for the hydroseeding? And in comparison to the initial cost, it was way, way lower.
That's good. I like the way you presented this project. I think it's a good prototype to present. We've got, we've just, you know, obviously thrown out four new roads for contract. And today, we saw how we might have four other ones with CDBG. So I think this is a good way to begin discussion and visualization of the work that we're doing throughout Nuesis County. And if there's ways to continue to improve it, keep doing it. But this is a great, a great presentation. So this is a report only, no action required.
I thank Juan, Juan and his crew for being out there and really, even on weekends, we talked and met sometimes because we weren't happy with the contractor, unfortunately. But anyway, I want to, you know, thank you for all the work and thank your crew for all the work. And also for the LJA for, you know, also staying on top of them because, you know, for a while, we almost lost them. But anyway, I just want to thank you for all that, you know, it's a-
Thank you, Juan. As they say, Juan, on to the next one.
All right.
There's just a report only, there's no need to do anything there. So let's go on to number three, where we do need an approval of a change order for IB McGee.
There's no change order.
No change order, move table.
Okay, move to table indefinitely?
Nope, just moved to table.
Okay, I just need a date.
Next meeting.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
January eighth.
Oh, gosh. Discuss and consider award and execution, number four, of Friesen Nichols for County Road seventy-three.
Judge, Commissioners, we're recommending-
So moved. Sorry, just-
You're recommending Friesen Nichols for this road and the funding on this road is?
CO twenty nineteen.
CO twenty nineteen for Elva. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Judge, on-
On number five, it's a change order for McKenzie GL Annex Fire Alarm System.
Yes, ma'am, we're recommending approval of change order number two for the McKenzie GL Annex Fire Alarm System. And it's for seven thousand, is that correct?
I think that's correct.
Yeah, so we're recommending, it's part of the CO's twenty fifteen.
Two oh one five. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Is that going to?
Aye.
Aye. Is that going to be the last of it, right, Juan?
That should be the last.
Okay.
Open that thing up.
All right. And it has been approved already.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct. Technically, it is open, it's just we need to get staff. Number six is discuss and consider selection of Raptor Engineering to provide verification of the ESPC contracts by JCI. And this is something, I didn't know about this, I learned about it in your, in this packet, that we do this to basically verify as an independent source our performance savings.
Good stuff. Motion, motion.
And I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a motion is second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. The next one is an important underwater-
I have a contract, Judge.
I need a contract as well on that. I need a motion to execute the contract.
So moved.
Motion and a second for the execution of engineering services contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. The next one is an important inspection of Bob Hall Pier. This work would be conducted by Jacob's Engineering Group.
Motion.
This contract needs a motion.
Motion to approve.
This is for the execution of this contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. I always appreciate when engineers come to get their contracts. Thanks, David. I mean, that, you know, the work is, it's good work. And we're doing, this is also part of economic development. It's infrastructure building, it's investment. But I like seeing people who care enough to come over here and talk to us about the project. Thanks for waiting all this time. I don't know how they feel, but I notice and I appreciate it. People should do that.
Thanks.
Discuss and consider, as they say, that's a friendly holiday tip. Discuss and consider authorizing tips to purchase ProTek for the, I'm sorry, purchase with ProTek for the installation of two owner-supplied chillers.
Judge, can I just go back for a second? David, I was just going to tell you, if you guys go out there and going to do some of that visual stuff we talked about, I don't know if I can get out there, but I'd like to try. So if you can just give me a heads up. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Sorry, Judge.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
And I know you're, I know this is obvious, but you're coordinating with Scott Cross and all that. Okay, thank you. Let me go back. This is, no problem, this is a chiller tips contract, Juan, tell us about it.
Judge, Commissioners, this is for the installation of the chillers that we already have ordered. We're expecting the chillers to be here, the two new chillers should be here sometime in February. ProTek is the, is, we're recommending ProTek for the installation of the two chillers. And the total amount is for three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred.
I'm going to make this motion with a resounding aye. I would like to make this motion and a second. And the only discussion is, is that, boy, is it coming in the nick of time. I mean, I don't like hiding the ball here. We went down on our chillers this week, the night before last, and it was a big deal. And we are working on cleaning those condenser tubes. But because of our actions that we took in twenty nineteen, because we have temporary connectors, we were able to get a temporary chiller. But make no mistake, the savings you found for us here on this contract enabled us to not have heartburn over the fact that those temporary chillers cost forty-five thousand dollars. The people ought to know why we're making investments. Can you imagine where we would be? Well, I can. You would be withdrawing from your reserve fund, which is a no-no. So I'm just here to put a big exclamation point on, thank you, Juan, for always looking out for our interest. Your savings was not meant, I was hoping it would just be savings, but now at least it's not a deficit. We're able to use the savings and apply it to our temporary chiller, which I hope leaves us quickly.
Good job.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah.
Good job.
Okay, is it forty-five, by the way, for the month, or?
No, 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 the total-
DePauw's coming over. I got a bill and it said forty-five thousand and I gulped.
It's on, that's based on time and material, Judge.
It's based, it's based on?
On time and material. In other words, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, DePauw.
It's time and material, so initially, when you bring the chillers over, you'll have a mobilization cost and then the setup and installation. Because setup is where basically they have very high voltage lines connected for electrical work. And then the water that we bring in from the temporary chiller is going to be, it's at pretty high pressure. So when you connect it, you're going to shut most of the valves manually. It's a little tricky game where you tell the software everything's working so there's no alarm to shut it down. But then you manually shut the valves you want till the water isn't coming through. And then you gradually open so that you don't have the whole head, hundred and thirty, hundred and fifty PSI pressure busting things. So it took us probably about two hours, two and a half hours to get that rigged up early morning between two-thirty and five AM, four-thirty AM and all. So all that is done. Now, basic cost is going to be monthly. We just got a PO for a larger amount because we don't know how long we'll need it. And luckily, the same contractor, Malik, is the one who was awarded the rental contract when we replaced the main chillers we have which are down. And so when we do that, we're going to work some deal out with them so that we don't have to pay for the entire rental fee when, if we need a temporary chiller during when we install the two new chillers for the train.
Right. That, that helps tremendously.
Tremendously.
And I imagine that little deal will be worked out with County Attorney Jimenez, so I'm thankful for that. Okay, much better on clarity. Of course, I won't lie to you, that's not what the invoice said. So it did, I remember I asked you about it yesterday, and so thank you for the clarification. County, how are we doing? Did we do that? You're good to go there? We need the vote, but we've got the motion and the second. And all those in favor of having this tips contract with ProTek signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Juan, the last one is a very important one.
Yes, ma'am, Public Works is recommending consideration of selection of the Smith Group. And this is for the medical examiner's building. And this is to perform a feasibility study. Chris Nor with Smith Group is here, and he wants to do a quick presentation for you. Is that a correct?
Absolutely, welcome, Chris. Thanks for traveling here and being with us here today. The medical examiner's office was recently identified in our capital improvement program and plan as being a high priority, high necessity. I reached out to Public Works, and apparently in twenty seventeen, this court reached out to your group, and we kind of resurrected that, those correspondence to bring you here today to tell us what you specialize in and how you can help this county in figuring out what we should be focused on building.
Yes, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Judge and Commissioners, I really appreciate it. My name is Chris Nor. I'm a forensic planner and architect with Smith Group. I'll go through the slides relatively quickly. At any point, feel free to stop me. The purpose of today's discussion is to give you a little bit of background about Smith Group and then tell you a little bit about the process and what we're going to be looking at. So Smith Group is a large firm, fifteen offices around the world. We have one in Asia, the remainder of those offices are in the United States. About thirteen hundred staff members that are, we work as an integrated practice. So we have architects, engineers, interior designers, planners, all working together for the betterment of our clients. The goal there is to be able to bring all those resources together for multiple different areas of focus. So it could be coastal waterfront, commercial, government work. But in the end, all of those, all of those individuals provide information, valuable information. provide information, valuable information that relate to your project. So we have a specific area of science and technology that has a, has six areas of focus, one of those being forensics. Um, in, from a lab, uh, perspective, uh, we have a number of facilities that we're very, uh, proud of, uh, 10 of which are, are national award winners from a, from a lab, a national lab, um, research and development, uh, magazine. Uh, but about 40 million square feet of lab space in the last 15 years. More specifically to forensics, where, um, uh, we have approximately 100, a little more than 100, uh, projects, uh, for forensics projects, and have been awarded six national awards from the, uh, American Institute of Architects, uh, Justice Facility Review. So forensics is definitely something near and dear to our heart. Um, and stepping into the planning process, I wanted to let you know that, that throughout this feasibility study, you know, we're, our goal is to be an advocate for you, to be an advocate for the county and for the region, and the things that you actually need for your, for your building. Um, we'll look at the, the project from a programmatic perspective. So what spaces are required and their relationship to each other, so that we can see it in big picture, and then down into the smaller detail. Some of those smaller detail elements will be the individual spaces themselves, to be able to understand what goes in, how much clearance is needed, those kinds of features, um, to make sure that when we come to a full building plan, when we're, when we're looking at the building itself, that everything is relating correctly and that we have adequate space. But also from a operational perspective, if we have the appropriate entrances for, for visitors, uh, that are unfortunately there to speak to someone in the facility, or potentially there for a, um, um, for a, an investigation. Um, anything that's coming in and out from a decedent perspective as well. And in the end, we really want to make sure that this is your project. This is not something that, that we're looking at from what, what was the last project that we did and bring it up. Um, and that's good enough. This is specifically for your county and for the region itself.
Judge, can I just ask a question real quick?
Yes.
Something more for, for you as well. Um, we talked about this, I know, am I, am I not remembering correctly, or is this one where the hospital district is gonna be involved potentially? And I'm just trying to get my arms-
So, yeah, forgive us just for a second, if you'll hold your thought.
They may need to be in on this, is what I was kinda getting at.
Yes, so, well, you're, yes, you're remembering somewhat correctly. It's yes and no. And let me tell you what the yes is, is that currently the medical examiner's office is on hospital district property, as, i.e. what you and I know is old memorial property. Um, and so in that vein, the, the concept would be if you would return the facility to those premises, okay, they would be interested in, in learning about what we're doing. But this is not a gain to design. We're just in that sort of assessment phase. But to your point, um, one of the explorations that the hospital district gave to me, so I am coordinating with them, is to explore a possible P3 arrangement for this facility. Cause if you'll remember from CIP, it was spec'd at a, at a, at a hefty price tag, because obviously it's highly specialized facilities. And so the idea is, is that this would be step one. Uh, and then step two would be hopefully writing an RFQ, uh, or an RFP probably, uh, to be, depending on whether you did design, build, or, or not, right? Depending on what procurement method you use. But then we would bring the hospital district in, and, and we would discuss whether or not that property would be the best site location. But in a P3, they typically want to own the land where they're gonna do it. So that's why HD is not involved right this second, hospital district. That makes sense?
Yeah, it absolutely does. And I appreciate it. And I guess I'm, I'm asking too because, um, it-
But they're fully aware.
No, no. And it was priced at a hefty price tag, and I'm not sure where I fall on all this yet. And I get this is just the planning phase. But while we're going through the planning phase, um, obviously, before we get too far down the planning phase, we would obviously want to let this gentleman know-
Yes.
Okay, where's this court leaning and-
And I met this-
-that kind of thing. Because obviously, if we're doing a whole separate location, I'm gonna gag on the price tag because it's gonna be, I mean, I know what land costs are around town, and I know what, you know, so-
Okay, so I'm gonna clarify. So you're gonna love it. You're gonna, it's gonna be the opposite of gagging, whatever that is. I guess it's gonna be glee, because we would not pay for any of the cost of construction or the land. What it would be is most likely a long-term lease that we would engage in.
With some-
With a private entity, a, a true P3.
Okay.
And, um, and this court had already approved a public-private partnership policy, and, uh, we use Bracewell for that. So the idea is, is that I don't think this court can afford-
Right.
-the price tag at all. And of course, it's, but so, so I mentioned this morning to Smith Group that we would need to visit with hospital district and, and on options on site, because the site, obviously, is a part of the complexity of what he's doing. But he's really gonna look also at the 16 counties that we serve, look at the growth, look at what the type of work that we're dealing with today is different than the work that we did yesterday. And, um, of course, we don't have a toxicology lab. We send everything out. There's a cost loss of efficiency there. And so they're gonna be looking at all these things. And then when he finishes, and remind the court, maybe 120 days?
Approximately.
Approximately 120 days. Then we would gather with all the stakeholders and say, okay, here's what they think we need. Now, where do you think the best location is? But just so you know, my preference, if you kinda wanna know where my head is-
Ma'am.
-it's to take and defer all that 16 million dollars. Because I think that, um, there's a possibility that there is a, that P3s are just a really great opportunity. They take all the financing risk, kinda like our chiller.
Become a tenant.
And then we become a tenant with no maintenance and operations at all.
And I think the 16 million-
That's great.
And I think 16 million might be light, because it-
Well, it could be.
Depending where we go. But I do, I do, for sake of whatever argument it is, I do like the idea of keeping it in that area, because I, I like leaving it. I, I don't wanna take something out of that part of our county or our city. You know, that could be an economic-
Oh, and forgive me, and it would be really cl- you're right. I need to, I need to be more specific. When I say different site, it would be absolutely not only in our county, but within close ro- proximity to our hospital.
Right. And so, and so I was just saying was it would be, it, it would be a good economic enhancement. It would be good for the, for the, for the growth of that area, to keep it in that area. Because anytime you put a new bright shiny penny somewhere, you know, it kinda helps.
Yeah, it does.
Just like the, the wonderful clinic that we have over there. So for whatever, in your planning purposes, I, 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 I like where it is. And it's still got a pretty reasonable proximity to-
It does.
-medical facilities, the hospitals, very close to Spahn Shore.
I think site selection is part of the scope. Or site.
We're gonna be talking about, we're gonna be talking about site selection and the, the importance of what happens on those sites. And operationally, how it impacts, uh-
So you can give us that, that piece of that information as well.
I just think it-
If you have a mental health building there, who knows?
Right.
Yeah, so you just, you never, anyway, so I'm really excited that, but I think what Commissioner Chasney's point is, is that there are affected stakeholders. And before you leave Corpus Christi in Noyes County today, we'll give you some, some contacts so that you can reach out and say, you know, who you are and, and what you're doing.
And I think it's really important that, as you say, Judge, getting the information out, and getting the information out that we are looking at this P3 and not looking at spending those very valuable COs that we have, that we've got a lot of work to do on other areas, that we already have facilities. Um, and, and certainly, there's advantages to ownership, and there's advantages to leasing. And certainly the advantage to leasing this is we don't have to come up with 16, to probably more like 20 something.
And the maintenance and operations, too.
Huge.
It's just, it's just huge.
And that's important for the taxpayer to know that we're, we, we recognize the need, and I do recognize the need to upgrade, do something to that facility without a doubt. Um, but that we're looking at so many different alternatives, and we are being good stewards of the tax.
I think that's a good point. And also, Tyner, I hate to put you in the spot, but is this building like a 45-year-old building? Medical examiners?
No, I hate to date myself. It was new when I started here.
Okay, so about 30 years?
And that's like 60.
About 27.
27 years old. Okay. Okay, I'm thinking about memorial.
Weren't you born here in the courthouse, Tyner?
So, um, well, at, at any rate, um, to kinda get us back on track, um, these are all the plan, that's okay. That's all the planning considerations that, that we're working on. But it's, um, anyone, do you wanna continue, or are you good, or?
And, and we will, during the planning process, we will be having conversations about the delivery method. And whether it be from county funds directly, or from a, a P3 relationship, that is, uh, not an atypical situation. There are, uh, certainly other, um, locations that are looking at, at P3 and have been operating that way. So I think that, that it's well within the bounds of, of the discussions.
Great. And of course, I'm gonna urge you to reach out to commissioners as well. All of us have different backgrounds, uh, that are incredibly valuable to, this is why we were, I guess, elected, right? We, we have the pulse of the community. And so just reach out to all of, all of us, too. You never know what great information you can extract. And, and if, if that's helpful to you, we'll also provide those contacts before you leave. So was there something else on this that you wanted to show to us?
I'll, I'll keep going really quickly.
Please do.
Medical examiner facilities are very unique. Um, no, that's not an actual individual.
Yeah, that's, we know, yeah.
But, but it shows you that, that there are a number of things that go into these facilities that don't allow you to just walk into them as an office building or as a hospital. They're, they are completely different. Um, they, they also serve a very important role in public health. So they may be viewed by most of the public as something that a person goes to after they've died. But it's also the front line of defense. If the medical examiners, the forensic pathologists are looking at, at what's happening in the community, they can start to see and work with the rest of the public health community to understand where the next opioid epidemic might be happening. What, what are the drugs that are coming in? So along with that, um, these facilities are, are put, uh, under a lot of, uh, operational stress, but so are the people inside the facility. And unfortunately, we're at a, 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 um, a great, um, reduction in the amount of people coming into forensic pathology. We're missing about 58% of the forensic pathologists that are necessary for the United States. And so we wanna make sure that we're providing facilities that improve recruitment and retention, that we don't have something that, although the facility was very modern 27 years ago, I believe was mentioned, um, it's not necessarily something that, that provides a great recruitment, um, uh, shareholder piece today. So how do we, how do we look at engagement of the staff? Um, the facility itself is gonna be very important. And all of those, those components of innovation, where it's located, are gonna be important for the study to address, in order to optimize, optimize asset utilization and minimize, minimize operational cost. So Travis County, um, has a new, uh, medical examiner facility. This is an image of that facility. Again, a very unique requirement here. Um, along the way, this is a, as, as Judge, you mentioned earlier, that, um, a problem is an opportunity. So in this instance, we're, we're continuing to work with our, uh, client Travis County in order to address some of the operational issues that are occurring in some of the, of the building itself. Um, so we are there for them along the way. We are not leaving our, our clients. Uh, transparency is gonna be very important, both from a, a betterment of the staff, but also for safety. So if in the autopsy and lab environment, there is a potential issue, uh, other staff can be able to walk by and see that something is happening. Um, planning for the unknown. As facilities age, they may need to change and grow. Um, in Placer County, California, um, some of the worry was if you build it, they will come. Uh, if you're the, as was mentioned, shiny penny, people may wanna come to you with their service, or with their work. And so how do we plan for the future? That these facilities don't grow very easily. But in Placer County, we were able to increase, increase the size of their autopsy area and their storage. Um, recruitment and retention, as I mentioned before, is important. It doesn't have to be a, a lot of extra money spent. There could be small spaces to be provided for staff, or to be able to allow for staff to have more access to daylight if not everyone has an office on the exterior window, for instance. Um, and then activity-based workplace, we wanna make sure that these spaces are, are active, that they're not done cellularly, that people are restrained to their own individual space. But there is a space to be able to feel like they're part of the community. Um, programmatically, these spaces are gonna have a lot of components that are, that are important for their, their correct operation. Uh, mechanically, in the, um, in the autopsy spaces, in the laboratory spaces, it's gonna be very different in comparison to an office, a general office environment. But in the end, we wanna make sure that there is space to be able to reflect and, and have respite, so that they can get away from the, the investigators, the toxicologists, and, and those in the autopsy arena, can get away from those high-stress environments and be able to, um, uh, gain some respite. Um, a couple of projects that we feel very, um, very proudly about, the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency. This building I'm showing because it is a, um, a, a location where the, the fallen servicemen and women are brought back to the United States. They're identified and then repatriated, brought back to their, uh, to their loved ones. It gives a good opportunity to be able to tell a story about what's happening in the facility. And unfortunately, this is gonna be, uh, a facility where people are going to be reunited with family. But it's a fortunate component at the same time, because we can find closure. They can find closure in that thing. Um, also, there's outreach. We have to be able to allow for the education in some of these facilities. And so being able to segregate those people coming into the facility using a tour route, a glass, a glass front, to be able to keep them out of the operations and safe, and all of the, uh, maintain operations on the other side as well. Hamilton County around Cincinnati, Ohio is, is, uh, one of the centers for the opioid epidemic. Unfortunately, they're at about twice the amount of, of intake for what they should in that, in that, uh, uh, population group. So, so the staff are under even more stress and more strain. We wanna try and make sure that the spaces are daylit, so that they have good color rendition, and that their eye strain is low. Uh, but then also to be able to provide that same transparency in the laboratory environment, allowing for communication from the office space into the laboratory, and then through the building to the exterior. Uh, for Johnson County Medical Examiner in Kansas, this is a facility that's gonna be relatively similar in size, um, and include toxicology as well. The facility is gonna grow. Again, this is another one of those, if you build it, they will come. They're getting a new facility for themselves. This is the first for them. Um, they, their staffing load will likely be small at first. And so how do we provide a large enough space that, that will allow them to grow in the future, but also all of those vantage points to be able to make sure that operationally, they can cover the bases on a, on a smaller and restrained crew. And then finally, again, as I mentioned earlier, this is a, this is a building where people are gonna come to on the worst day of their life, or some of the worst times of their life. And they're gonna be emotionally strained as a, as a member of the public. And so some of the spaces need to be able to respond to those kinds of, uh, needs. Uh, they need to have, those family members need to have a space of their own in order to reflect and be able to compose themselves before they leave. So that was it. Thank you for this opportunity again.
Thank you so much. I just wanna mention, of course, I know we'll be in constant dialogue, but, um, because we are, because our medical examiner, um, actually, he will be our chief as of next year, is also a forensic anthropologist by training. It dawned on us that we have, um, an institution of higher learning, Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, that gives a degree in forensic anthropology. And wherever we can cross collateralize our education institutions of higher learning, we would like to. In other words, you know, this is an opportunity to collaborate and to maybe bring classroom, you know, education to this forensic facility. And because CSI has glamorized the, the trade of forensic, well, between Bones, I guess, and CSI, you know, forensic anthropology and forensic studies have seen a dramatic increase. And so it would be wonderful to know that, um, I would like to connect you with Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi to see if there's anything there that could help us. When you put kids in seats, there's an economic benefit to the institution and possibly ourselves as well. So just wanting you to know that that component exists in our community.
That's it. Helps for recruitment.
Yes. Go ahead.
I apologize. I know this, these come from tax notes. I just didn't see the funding requested amount on the backup for this. I just saw where-
Um, Tyner?
Maybe I just missed it. I just didn't see it.
Well, it should be CO 2019.
Right. I just don't know how much.
Oh, how much? It, it's in, it's in the contract.
Yeah, before you go into that amount, just, uh, if the court can, uh, select-
Yeah, let's, she likes us to do it in two pieces, but, but-
But I, I need to know before I select, how much?
Well, because he's a professional, you cannot use a dollar amount as a reason for selection.
Oh.
So that's why we need to select first.
I just didn't see it. I know, I don't. That's, I just, that was all I was asking. I, I'm fine making a motion.
Can we say things like it's under six figures or something like that, or?
Well, no, I know it's not why, why, why we are selecting. I'm just wondering how much we're spending, when we select him. So however, yeah.
I felt like I had it.
So move to selecting.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to select. All those, I believe he does meet the qualifications.
Oh, absolutely.
Expertise, obviously. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Juan, would you be able to provide the court, um, the information?
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize.
Is that okay, Lauda? Can he do that?
Yes.
Cause now, cause he has a one pager. Okay, he has a one pager on it. Is that okay, Lourdes? Can he do that? Because now, because he has a one-pager. Okay, he has a one-pager on it.
What we have here is, a lump sum is $1,003,500. That includes expenses.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Those are the COs, 19?
Yeah, tax.
Is there any way we can get an update on the COs? See what we've spent? You're going to see it in, we have it every, you're about to get there. Okay. It should be. It's always typically.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, but you include, I guess I get the report. It's included at every.
We don't get it, Judge. It would just be nice.
Okay, it would be nice then to give it to everybody, please.
Yeah, and I think what she's asking for is just kind of an updated, Elizabeth, what we've voted for. How much that totals what we've voted for. The rest of it will come as we go. Yeah, right. Please.
So far, it's chillers, elevators, and.
Roads?
Well, roads, and I'm missing one. A Bishop building for $99,000. Last court, there was a summary, Elva. Last court, we did have a summary, and I thought we had asked to make sure that summary kind of comes back. If you wouldn't mind sharing that with Dale. It should be on every month. Oh, that's where it was. It's on the monthly reports. That's why you don't have it here.
And if it can be like, and maybe we've missed it, but it could be like a, here's what we voted for. And like the total projects, $1 million, and we voted for the engineering services. We voted for the planning. Some sort of, yeah, so we can.
And obligated.
Yeah.
And just so you know.
Encumbered in your.
It should look just the way y'all did it last month. It was very, it was very well done last month. We need to make sure that's repetitive.
Thank you.
Okay, well, as they say, you're ready to get to work. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
And so we did review the letter agreement, and so it's ready to be approved.
Okay, so now she needs a separate motion for execution?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay, Michael, you've got a few items for purchasing.
Yes, the first item is discuss an award IFB number 3113-19 for the Bankhead booster pump station, Cindy Park 2, Texas Water Development Board project number 62622. This is the second time we went out for bids on this, and on this occasion, we received four bids. And at this point, we're recommending award to the low bidder JS Heron Company for the base bid amount of $1,146,500 and the additive bid $238,450, subject to negotiations.
And do I have a motion?
And this is funded in large part by Texas Water Development Board funds, is my understanding, Commissioner?
So it says large part, and it says 2016 COs, so can you break that down? Or can someone break that down?
No, this is, this is, yeah, this is Water Development Board and the Water Authority.
Okay, pass it to everybody.
It says 2016 COs. Oh, wait, am I reading the wrong one?
Yeah, no, that's not correct.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Yeah, it's Water Development Board funds as well as outside funds from Nuasis Water Supply Corporation and South Texas Water Authority.
So nothing out of our general?
That's correct. That's STW. That was the one that we all went to in Cindy Park. You're also being passed out a handout that we're keep, that I was referring to, that I get every week or so, whenever we make a change. So just to kind of give you an update.
Thank you. This is good.
Yeah.
This is what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
In fact, we can just get that like whenever you send it.
Well, Dale will include it on every monthly, but then we're keeping it in my office, so I'll just kind of make Teresa copy you guys.
That'd be great.
I'm sorry, Tiner.
Just a separate email because sometimes, yeah.
But just so you know, guys, because we said it, it's the roads that we did last court, the radios, which we did earlier this year, the elevators, the small, where it's a supplemental funding to what JAG's doing in Bishop, and then the air conditioning. Okay? And then, of course, what we did today will be added, which will be Ms. Roth's consulting contract. If you want to make a little note, you'll get an update after today.
Thank you.
Anything else you need there? Let us know.
All right, Michael, I need to get, do I have a, do we vote on that? I need a motion, a second. We got a vote? And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay. And then, Michael, we've got.
Yes, so on this one, this is discuss an award RFP number 3111-19. This is for the security assessment consulting services. This is for the courthouse atrium area and also the tower location. We received six bids, and the evaluation committee reviewed these proposals in detail. We scored those proposals in the areas of project work plan, security consulting qualifications, project key personnel, background and experience, and price, and that was as stipulated in the RFP documents. The committee carefully considered each proposal. We were fortunate to receive some very high quali, highly qualified proposals from multiple companies, which made for a really close scored evaluation. The consensus was reached on a recommendation that this RFP be awarded to True North Consulting Group LLC. Their proposal provides the county with the most qualified provider at the best overall value, and I recommend approval.
So move.
Michael, go ahead.
Who, just for our purposes, who's the incumbent?
There's none. This is a brand-new service. This is where we're going, and having a consultant come in and look at our premises.
Courthouse security.
This is not, this is.
This is not the security guard station. This is an actual evaluation of our courthouse facilities. And later on, y'all, when we get to meet some of the folks that are working on this project with us, there's some really experienced folks that have actually done security for Super Bowl 52 that this group was part of. They've been trained in counterterrorism, and they've got a very extensive history of over 35 years of service.
Where's it from?
They're based in Waco.
But all their consultants are based all over the country and world, as a matter of fact. They're very, very impressive. I think the nice thing would be is this motion is to discuss an award, but then Lourdes and her team will actually negotiate the contract. And at the time that they're, I'm going to hopefully encourage them to come to visit us, and maybe we can make them available to us through a workshop, because there's lots to, to our executive session, whatever you believe is appropriate.
And per their proposal submission, they stated that they would be ready to begin work within two weeks of execution of the contract date.
Michael, my question is simply, I know we're looking at courthouse, and I know we've thrown in, or I've suggested in the past and others too, I think, to throw in our other courthouses, whether it's, you know, where the JP's are, or whether the, especially the juvenile judge, that's.
It's a great point that you bring up because what we found when we received proposals from multiple vendors is that they have done citywide, this particular group did a citywide assessment in Garland of over 166 properties. So they're familiar with doing complete assessments. We might have had a narrow focus because we were definitely concerned about the courthouse itself. But it seems like these groups are very well experienced in.
And perhaps you can direct county attorney to create a contract such that it allows for that expansion of scope. But I think for this one, it's going to be courthouse tower and so, but I'm fully supportive of giving us flexibility. But just so you know, this award was based only on this one facility.
Right, that's the way we wrote the proposal.
That's how we wrote it, so.
Specifically wrote it just for this courthouse? Like we can't include our other courthouse? It didn't say courthouses?
It, but Lourdes can create, but you can create some expansion. Let's meet, I say let's meet them first, right? Let's meet them. Let's talk to them. And if we like them, which I think their credentials are fantastic. I want you to know that out of all the proposals, I find, there was another group also that was just, in my mind, equally as fantastic, that I actually ranked higher at first. So I want you to know, we have a tremendous amount of opportunity here, but time is definitely behind us. We need to get, we thought this provided the best value for now, but I'm supportive of that, Lourdes. I think you've heard the will of the court to.
Just one last.
Create some expansion.
This was, I'm assuming, because the sheriff is the head person.
He was there.
Yes, so the sheriff is on the evaluation committee. Also, the risk manager was involved on this committee as well, Tiner, the judge, myself.
And that's, I just want to make sure, you know, sheriff's job is to, he's the lead.
He was the lead on this.
Yeah, and so as long as, I know, I saw his signature on here. I just want to make sure he's comfortable with it.
The committee definitely.
I appreciate everybody doing it, but the sheriff is the law enforcement security guy, and I want to make sure he's.
He definitely held a lead role on this, and we were in consensus opinion on the group.
That's what I needed. Thank you very much.
And you might note, the funding source on this comes from actually my county judge, older COs. If Teresa were here or she's listening, she'd come in and give me a number.
I have it here. It's the 1921, 1921, 3001.
It is old. So these are older COs, and I believe it's so important to conduct this assessment that I've put this so we don't have to tap into our budget at this time. Okay? I think, looking for a motion. We've got, but do you need to amend it with the expansion to give you some direction, or you're good? You heard it.
I'll look at it separately.
Thank you.
This was.
That's fine. Fair enough. Okay. All those, and a second by Chesney, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay, how about the next one, Michael? Courthouse Food Services.
Okay, this is discuss an award RFP number 3114-19, Courthouse Food Services. As you know, the courthouse cafeteria provider had had some personal issues and decided to discontinue providing that service to the county. And so we put this bid out so that we could get a new provider in here. He's also stayed on in the interim, passed his expiration date to help get us from point A to point B. We received two proposals on this item. The evaluation committee reviewed those proposals. We reached a consensus recommendation to award to B&amp;B Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Shoreline Sandwich Company, and I recommend approval.
Motion is on the table. Do you have a second? And the only discussion I have is I want to thank Chef Abdul for all the years that he and his wife gave to this courthouse, and we wish him the best and really want to, again, extend to his staff and to everybody that we really appreciate being able to have services that make it easy for us to work and eat and do so quickly and efficiently. And he wants to move on, and this is going to give us a new opportunity. If you're not familiar with Shoreline Sandwich Company, you're in for a great treat. And they have several locations all around Nuasis County, but specifically inside Corpus Christi 2, just downtown. So this will be their third location, and I invite you to check them out online, Shoreline Sandwich Company, for county courthouse employees that are listening. And as I said, I think the only thing, my question for you is, when does he think that he can be up and running?
So in their proposal, they indicated that they would be ready around mid-January. Provided everything moves.
Goes fast. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay, and then, Elva, take us through two items, the first being a budget change order, and the second is with the certification for the DA and the sheriff.
Yes.
Take the budget order first. It's order number four.
Yes. Yes. Good afternoon, judges and commissioners. We have budget change order number four for fiscal year FY 1920. The first item is for, all it was is a reclassing of a budget line item from one to another for $45,000 for Department 3510, District Clerk Jury Administration.
So no impact, just a re, just a movement? Okay.
The next one is Law Library Fund. I guess Ida's utilizing some of her department head salary to move into temporary salary for specific projects that she's working on.
And again, no fiscal impact?
I'm sorry.
And is this a movement from one department to another?
It's just one line item.
One, sorry, one line item from another within libraries. Okay.
So moved.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Okay, and then how about the agreement and certification?
Yes, we are requesting approval of these reports. We have reviewed them, and they tie to our general ledger. So they have already have been submitted, and we just request your approval.
And do I have a motion for those approvals? And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. I note for the record that there is no items to be discussed in executive session this time. Would you confirm that, county attorney? Okay, that's having been confirmed, we'll, I'm so sorry? A couple of them? Okay, thank you so much. I want to begin the adjournments in memory of, and I have one commissioners that, it brings me true sadness. I'm going to try my best to read this. First, I'd like to ask if you all have any. I'd like to end with this one.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any, Chesney? Okay. So during the legislative session, all of you were so much a part of, commissioners and staff. We spent a lot of time in Austin, and on the row that, where Chairman Hunter is, and quite frankly, a lot of the South Texas delegation, at the end of that row is the Office of Richard Raymond. And I spent a lot of time in that office. It's a very special office because it's quite large. It's one of the older offices there on that campus. And he just always, always wanted to help Nuasis County. He's been a friend for a long time of my family's, and he's been a great state representative. A few nights ago, I got a text that his beautiful boy, Aaron, died in his sleep. I want to read this to you. He was 23 years old. Aaron Davis Raymond passed away in his sleep at the age of 23 in Austin, Texas, on the early morning of Friday, December 13, 2019. He was received by the Lord to whom he prayed every day. Aaron so loved God that he read and studied the Bible every single day. His parents considered him to be a Bible scholar. He was born in Austin, Texas, on October 7, 1996. Came into this world fighting for his life with a big bruise on his face, a broken clavicle bone, and the umbilical cord wrapped around his neck. And through his life, Aaron was faced with challenges. He suffered from type 1 diabetes, which required insulin every day of his life, from the time he was diagnosed at the age of 13. But through it all, Aaron loved God, loved people, loved his family, loved his friends, his teachers. He loved to read, write. He really loved music. He had a beautiful smile and had the biggest and kindest heart any human being could ever have. Aaron will be missed by those who knew and loved him. Although his family is devastated, they are comforted by the fact that if anyone was ever deserving of a place in heaven, it would surely be Aaron. He will no doubt pepper God with questions about the Bible, but his family would expect no less. Aaron was a very proud Eagle Scout, and he's survived by his parents, his sister Eva, his brother Ryan, and his grandparents, and he's preceded in death by one grandfather, Gabriel C. Raymond. May Aaron forever rest in peace. So often, the jobs we take require us to be present. And today, we needed to be present here for the good of Nuasis County. But because we are here, we could not be in Austin with the Raymond family, as they did prayer services, as prayer services will be today and the funeral will be tomorrow. It's my understanding Aaron will be laid to rest at the Texas State Cemetery in Austin, where his dad can see him. I don't know. Sometimes life makes no sense, and the only thing I can do is this, is adjourn in his memory. His father helped us so much. One day, I walked into his office, and he said, "If nobody will sponsor that bill, Barbara, I will sponsor that bill." What do you say to a friend like that who would reach across the aisle? And then this terrible tragedy, he was the age of my own beautiful son, Daniel. The fact that Bishop Carmody was here today comforts me that I cannot be there representing Nuasis County to tell our great friend, Richard Raymond, and his beautiful wife, how sorry we are in the loss of his beautiful child, Aaron. But when you sign this, when I sign this, I hope he knows that his friends in Nuasis County will be praying for him. And normally, commissioners, I just signed, but if you would, would you sign too? And the next time you're at the Capitol, would you please go and love on our friend, Richard Raymond, a very honorable public servant of the great Lone Star State? And with that, if there are no more adjournments in memory, I will sign this document and pass to all of you. May all of you have the most beautiful holiday with your family. Treasure them. Because tomorrow, we do not know what life or the Lord will bring to us. But we do know, in his name, we feel joy and peace and love. And for that, I can adjourn, even though I have tears in my eyes, with true happiness, that all of us will be with loved ones this season. Thank you so much. It's 12:36 PM, and I'm gabbling us out.